Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Two requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to their meetings until the Washington State restrictions are lifted. Therefore, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met, then the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either be reconvened only virtually or to be adjourned. The Agenda Packet is available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wal.gov/Agenda. Please note that the city council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. And then lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, welcome, and we are keeping our distance, and sanitizing, and using all the proper precautions to stay safe, and we appreciate everybody's cooperation in that. So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order with the rule call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present online.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barajas.
Present online.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you. Mr. Maloney called? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Alright, can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just whisper.
Thank you for that. Next, we go to verbal reports from council members. Any council members like to report? Any meetings or anything they've done over the week? If not, I'll just report that Mayor Pro Tem Barajas and I just attended a fire pension board where everything seems to be running smoothly, and the funds are there for those people that require, and making sure that the financial reports are stable and moving forward. So appreciate that. And, and once again, I just want to say thank you for all the council members that were able to attend last week. I was visiting extended family. And I'll tell you what, I really appreciate, appreciate our city and the way we live here, and our diverse and community. I gotta tell you, I'm proud to be a Pasco citizen. So with that, if there's nobody else, we'll move right on into the next item for discussion tonight. We have an Inclusivity, Equity, and Diversity Commission Work Plan Presentation today. And I would like to have Jeffrey Robinson, the chairperson of the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission, come on over. But while you're coming up, Mr. Zabel, would you like to do some more introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I did want to give a few comments and kind of just set some background for council. Mr. Robinson, or Commissioner Robinson is going to go through the work plan tonight, but I think it's kind of helpful to kind of revisit, because there's a lot that's happened with this committee since it started. It was established back in February 2018 under Resolution 3820 as a limited-term commission. Initially, the term was for 24 months, and their purpose was outlining their charter. And I think it's important to kind of just review those key points anyway tonight for a minute, because the presentation is aligned with your charter. So examine the practices, procedures of the city to identify strategies to create a greater feeling of inclusion and welcoming for all who live here. Engage with Pasco residents, which they've done, interest groups and businesses. Identify strategies that help the city be more inclusive, engaging our residents. Identify funding strategies to implement these goals. Present recommendations to the city council on how to achieve these goals, and celebration of diversity. And then finally, the commission was tasked to provide the city council with a report on opportunities to recognize and celebrate Pasco's diverse culture. You're actually going to hear a couple of the recommendations tonight along those lines. So I think, you know, there's been some comment about the time it takes to get something like this done, which is come to the council a couple of different times, which is why the 24-month initial term just really turned out to be not quite enough time. This is a very complex organization. It's a complex city, and the commission really had to spend quite a bit of time just understanding city processes and programs. In that, in that regard, the IDEC received presentations from city departments on topics such as communication, hiring practices, public access, training throughout 2019. In addition, they received committee, or presentations from community organizations from, from the school district, Benton County, or excuse me, Benton, excuse me, Franklin County, other agencies, just to kind of help this commission, which was a panel of laypersons, really understand how government worked and some of the rules we had to work under. That was a good chunk of 2018, the remainder of 2018, and a good chunk of 2019. And they were just starting to get kind of rolling. They'd done some few community outreaches. They'd worked on their initial draft of their long-term, longer-term work plan. And were getting ready for, I think, moving pretty, pretty well towards a close of business. By then, council had extended the committee a year. And then we hit the first, first half of 2020. And we had several conditions that hampered the progress of the commission at that point in time. Obviously, COVID put everything at a standstill for six, seven months before they could start meeting again due to mandatory limitations on public meetings, as well as we had a few commission vacancies. And so we had the orientation of three commissioners when they were able to finally start meeting. So again, they started meeting in August of 2020. Their first order of business with three new commissioners was to review their original draft work plan, and then start to finalize that. The new commissioners, new blood on the commission, brought, I think, some new ideas as well that generated a lot of good discussion among the commission. Myself, I was able to attend most of their meetings, and the discussion's been, I think, really good. But anyway, for the reasons outlined above, and their desire to be, to present meaningful and complete recommendations, to the city council, the council, or the IDEC requested an extension of the ad hoc commission. And so they're extended through December 20, excuse me, December 31st of 2021. So that's kind of where we're at today. And this evening, Chairperson Robinson is going to provide the council with their work plan and some of the progress they've made. With that, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, Jeffrey, and thank you for coming and presenting tonight.
It feels a little weird not to be a citizen speaking to you and to be a chair. I'm a little nervous. I hope you'll all indulge me just a little bit here. I'm really happy to be here, and to all of my fellow commissioners whom I know are watching this right now. I know that you're with me in spirit, and thank you for everything you do. With that being said, as an old college professor, mine used to open every class. Let's talk. Alright. So, when you're looking at our work plan, it's important to understand the context in which you're looking at it. For example, when we come up with objectives, we classify these objectives by the urgency of the thing we wish to do, the impact on the community, and the feasibility. It would be wonderful if we could come up with something random, like put another man on the moon, but I don't think the City of Pasco can afford that. And let's be honest, who would really want to take that away from NASA? The next thing to remember, or that you'll see in the plan, is recommendations to city council. It's important for those who may not understand what it is we do. We are not a governing board. We do not tell the city council what they will and won't be doing. That is not our role. We advise, and we advise strictly within the confines of the mission that the city council has given us. It is not my place as the chair to tell you how to run your city. It is my place to give you recommendations on subjects that fit in with that mission. Let's remember that as we go forward, the limitations that any advisory board is under. Next thing is, we have identified ongoing initiatives, and what we mean by that is initiatives that will require much greater investment. And I'm sorry, I don't like speaking with masks on. It's terrible. But that's, those are the kinds of long-term planning and thinking strategies that you folks may want to consider. It's not something that can be done in a day. If promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion were that easy, everybody would do it. And I gotta tell you, Rome's going to take a few years. Alright, moving on. We good? Seeing everybody happy. So let's talk about the three objectives that we actually identified. First and foremost, to help emphasize "help" the City of Pasco develop a strategic equity plan. Again, all the power rests with the seven of you, because that's who the people of this city chose to lead us. You decide what you're going to do, but we want to help you within the confines of our mission. The second item is something we actually have already started to do, and we did during our first year of operation, which is hold inclusion, diversity, and equity meetings in the community and on a quarterly basis. Before COVID struck, one of the last meetings that the Inclusion Commission had was a celebration of Diwali, a rather beautiful festival. It was an educational event. We had wonderful food there. We had someone explain the history of this sacred holiday. And we also invited the community to tell us what they wanted to see from the City of Pasco. Where did they feel that we had growth opportunities? And that's the other thing to remember whenever we make a recommendation. A recommendation is not telling you you're a bad city. It's not telling you that you don't deserve the praise that people like myself wish to give you. It's identifying areas where we could grow, where we could do it better. Because at our soul and at our core as a city, we are innovators. Look at how far we've come in the last four years alone. Now we're getting a Costco. We grow, we boom, we do all of these things. We must always be open to the fact that no matter how good we are, we can always be better. And there's always going to be something more we can do. The final thing is the Holy Grail that all government of any kind rests upon. It is improved engagement with the city. We want to help you to do that. It doesn't matter whether we agree with the people that speak up. What matters is that the people feel welcome to speak up, to tell us what they really think, and to tell us how we can best interface with their lives with the sacred mission that we as members of this government have been entrusted with. Now, I would like to see a city council chamber that's full every single time when COVID's over. I want to help you get there, and I want to help the city council, as does my commission, be known to history as the innovative city council that got us where we needed to go to reach our full potential. At all times, this is fundamental to what it is we do. That being said, let's actually get into some of these goals, shall we? I can already see questions in some of your eyes. I'm looking at you, Pete Serrano. Alright, so.
Plenty of them.
I know you do. Wouldn't be here if you didn't. Okay. First, the first one we identified, let's explore it a little, is help the City of Pasco develop a strategic equity plan. Again, let's focus on the first word of the bullet point, recommend. Not order, not shove you. Recommend things that you could do to help diversify our city's workforce, and to really make, to help promote the public trust in that workforce. The fact of the matter is, we have one of the most diverse communities in the state of Washington. We should always be looking at ways in which we can make the workforce that we employ as a city government reflect the population. This is key because it helps to build trust, and it also is a living embodiment of this city council's continuous mission to make things better. The second thing that you need to know when you look at this is providing recommendations on further diversity, equity, and inclusion, and anti-racism training to all city volunteers and staff. Now, I'm going to pause right now, because I know that one of the questions I've already gotten before I even got into this building today was, "Does this mean you're going to order our city to do something? Does this mean Dave Zabel's bad at his job? Does this mean we are failing?" No. What it means is, once again, that perhaps there's a growth opportunity. Perhaps you have a training on subject A. Well, what you really need is a training that covers subjects A, B, and C, and prepares your workforce and your volunteers to be able to approach situation D. We are not telling you that you have failed. What we are telling you when we do something like this is that we've identified a growth opportunity to make you stronger, to better reflect the values of this community. Again, let us remember, we advise, you rule. It is the way of government. Moving on, because I can see nods, and I can even see some smirks under those masks. It makes me happy.
Can I just make one quick, I guess, question? You want this interactive, or you want the questions at the end?
That is up to the mayor, not me.
I would say, I would say let's, we're going to finish the presentation, then we can ask the question, and go back to where, it's only eight slides, so let's go ahead.
It's only eight, and you know how I never shut up, Pete. Come on now, give me some credit. Alright, so I would explain the picture, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. There's a difference between equality and equity, and I can get into that more after the presentation, if you like. Okay, so the next one, which is, I love that tree. It's like a bunch of hands. It's so cool. The next goal that we identified was hold inclusion, diversity, and equity meetings in the community on a quarterly basis. Look, this is actually one I'm really passionate about. Because outside of my city work, I interface with the community quite regularly. And while it is sometimes difficult to hear things that I didn't do right, I still gotta hear them. And when we hold events like this, we're connecting with the community. We're doing what you've asked us to do. You wanted an interface, so we're trying to assist and be the interface you wanted us to be. The meetings are not always easy. I will tell you, the one we had about the Diwali, where we featured the Diwali celebration, one of the things I heard that chilled me to the bone, that I would never have thought of, was about how downtown Pasco isn't exactly friendly to people in wheelchairs or with disabilities. Disability rights, disability identity, sometimes, in fact, a lot of times, gets swept under the rug. Another one that I've heard is that we aren't making enough of a statement about the growing hate crime violence against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And there's a small but very vibrant community in this city that, I gotta be honest with you, feels like we don't give a crap. Now, I wouldn't have known that if I hadn't spoken to the community, if I hadn't tried to get out. So these events principally are not about us finding fault. It's about finding where the community thinks there might be fault, or where the community wants us to grow. It's about them, not us. We're servants. All of us are servants. So when we go through that, one of the things I suspect will have caught people's eye is to establish a questionnaire consistent with the city survey instruments. Well, we now have Ask Pasco, which I gotta be honest with you, is pretty cool. It's a great app. So this one, we might need to, you know, dialogue a little more with city staff and the city council about how we can make realistically factor into that process, because another thing that we want to focus on when we do a commission like this is it's not about reinventing the wheel. It's never about reinventing the wheel. It really is to make the wheel run smoother, so we can go a lot further along, whatever path we're in. So I know I, as the chair, would actually love at some point to connect with city managers, able, or city staff to figure out how we could maybe implement or change that one, so that we could work more effectively together where that is concerned. Because again, efficiency, the wheel must go longer. Alright, and then the final thing I want to call your attention to is something I brought up in relation to the slide, which is rotated among the city council districts. I think that we're all adults, and we can all acknowledge that one of the biggest problems facing our city is an east-west divide. West Pasco at times feels like it's not getting the attention it deserves. East Pasco definitely has made clear that they do not feel that they are getting enough attention. So when we do these and we rotate these among the six city council districts, we are endeavoring to help correct the misconception that may exist, and that I think does exist, that we are divided. Remember, we are one Pasco. One Pasco, one bold vision, one great city that has grown like a rocket going into space. We cannot forget who we really are. This will help us to do exactly that. Finally, improve engagement with the city. Now, this is another one of those where I want to use the term "growth opportunity." And no, that's not some hippie-dippy crazy term that we use to avoid hurting somebody's feelings. If all you ever think about is what you did wrong, and all you say is, "Where'd I screw up in a day?" What impetus do you have to change? How will you acknowledge the good things you've actually already done? So let's get into growth opportunity for a minute. We have a large Latinx population here. We have a lot of people, you know, not just Latinx, we have a growing Coptic Eastern European population. We have a lot of people that speak many different languages other than English. And for them, these meetings are not actually all that helpful. It's, I don't know how the subtitle process works, but if you really think about it, and you're a newer resident to Pasco, or somebody who does not speak fluent English, what would you make of this meeting? Would you know what I was saying? That's a barrier to participation, because what if the person that's being excluded is one of the best engineers on the planet? And they might have been able to tell you something you didn't know, or your staff didn't know, about the bridge that you want to put in another part of Pasco, that would have saved you hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars. That's a barrier. So we identify those. And the last one is one that I will admit, I didn't realize was an issue for a lot of people, which is that we need to assure that residency status is not a deterrent to participation. There is no monopoly on good ideas, is there? Is that in an innovative society like the one we're trying to build in Pasco, really a mindset and idea that we should have, that we exclude people because we find some small thing about them that doesn't really fit in with our vision? We are Pasco. "So most Pasco," I believe, is the expression we use here. We are Pasco. So that's something to think about, especially when we're talking about public engagement. IDEC recommendations for city council. I love the rocks, you know, that picture was chosen, because isn't it soothing, like a Zen garden or something? Nobody else seems soothed. I'll have to remember that. You know, one of the things that we thought of that we would recommend to the council, and the council can feel free to say, "No, back down. You ain't got it, son. Sit down." Is open trainings to the community and local business owners who are looking to educate themselves on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now, we can always improve, but one great thing about the City of Pasco is that we try. We actually do have diversity trainings for our employees, and it might be a good idea in the future to figure out how we could open those up to members of the community that want to see them. I mean, it's a lot like when you send your child to school. You want to know what textbook your child is reading out of, don't you? So in addition to promoting public trust by showing them what we see behind the scenes, and opening yet another layer of government to feed back into actual, you know, examination, it's also giving them an opportunity to partake in a training that they, for all we know, may not have the ability to access. This may bring up new ways of management, new thought processes. And in all honesty, if we did something like that, I'm a liability guy. My first and foremost thought whenever I do something relating to government work is, is the thing I'm about to do going to get my government sued? Am I making it easier to complain and sue the city government, or am I making it less easy? Now, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'd like to think whenever I'm doing something for this commissioner, for you folks, my job's to make you look good. My job is also to make it much harder to crap on your parade, for lack of a better term. So folks, that's kind of how I approach my job, and that's one of the reasons we put some of these recommendations up here. Now, increase diversity in city campaigns and marketing tools. You know, this one, I think COVID has illustrated in a very painful way for all of us, because there are populations in our city that legitimately don't understand why we wear the masks, that don't understand the rules that our governor has laid out. And there's a language barrier there. There may even be a cultural barrier there. And whether you agree with those restrictions or not, and I gotta tell you, there's a diversity of opinion on the Inclusion Commission about these. I've got a few diverse opinions myself. The reality is, if we're not reaching out to those marginalized communities, and we're not getting through to them by recognizing the barriers that we have to cross to speak to them, we're setting them up to get hurt, fine, or God knows what. And so that's the kind of thing that we want to think about, is what, how is our city marketing to these folks? How is our city getting its point across? Now, I'd say that also lowers liability, wouldn't you, if by chance our city was able to effectively communicate with every marginalized community in the city? I think that if we could do that, well, heck, our city might just look like an even better version of the best city on earth. Finally, when looking at this, support and promote diverse cultural heritage events in Pasco. You know, Juneteenth is a big deal. And I will admit, for much of my life, I hadn't been taught what Juneteenth meant. I didn't understand until I joined this commission why that is such a sacred and special moment in American history, or what it really meant. And so one of the blessings we're already getting is someone like myself was educated on that. And I think, especially now that we know the state legislature has turned this into a paid holiday, it's important to lift up events like that. It's important to be able to help people to know what things like Diwali are. It's important that we think about all of the people who live here, and what we can do to make them feel welcome to be here. This isn't a one-size-fits-all community. It never was. So by promoting heritage events in Pasco, by daring to be bold in this way, we are giving a lot of people the impression that they matter. And that's an impression I sure as heck would like to spread, wouldn't you? So let's see the next one. Ongoing initiatives requiring greater investment. I somehow thought that a more British-sounding voice might sell that one. I'm here for you, Mr. Mayor. Tell me when the hook's coming out. First and foremost, improve educational campaigns. I think we covered that one to death. I don't think you folks need me to go into why we need to improve how we interface. Introduce evaluation and assessment tools. One thing I know that I'm very passionate about is an inclusion audit report card thing, where you identify categories of things that you'd like to see in how we do things as a city. You click the thing you think we're not doing well. We examine that a little bit more closely. So giving the city council, look, one of the biggest complaints I hear about inclusion and diversity-related subject matter is work product. Work product, work product, work product. You've given me a bunch of cute hippie-flower-y language, but you haven't really given me anything to measure anything. You've used it as a political battering ram, but you haven't really given me the metrics I need to make an improvement. So how would I, as a city official, actually know what the heck you're talking about? If you do something like create an inclusion and equity report card with actual measurable standards of success, so that we're not having some kind of mission creep phenomenon, where we got in there, we thought we had one thing, but oh no, there's about a million things connected to it. If you define the rules and parameters of the mission that you're trying to accomplish, we will get there. It will be efficient, and we will become models for not only the rest of the state. You never know what we could inspire in other areas. That's going to be an ongoing thing. A one-size, one-year doesn't fit all. You set a review period for it. For example, every two years, the report card's got to be looked over again. You may have new council members by that time that have different ideas, different experiences. We don't exclude anyone. And let's see here. Introduce annual inclusion and scorecard. I kind of got into that. Work in communication with, okay, so this one, I think, is one that may have produced some confusion. So let's, let's really wrap our heads around this one. That doesn't mean we go into the schools and tell them how to do things. That doesn't mean I, Jeff Robinson, suddenly became Emperor Robinson of God knows where. What that means is we want to engage the youth in these processes, because you know what? I'll tell you something, that I had to learn the hard way with the kids in my own family. Children have ideas. They have opinions, and they might just want to share them with us. Sometimes you don't want to hear them. Sometimes you do. But you still want to make space to give them a chance to be involved. You're making a lot of decisions that are going to affect them for years to come. Shouldn't they at least have some for them to let us know what they think? And finally, I endeth the presentation. I tried to, I'm so shy. Can you tell how shy I am, folks? I can see giggles. Alright, Pete, I know you've got at least one good question. Stunt me, bro.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I will go ahead and start with Pete, if you're ready for the question.
Okay, kind of two points. One's going to dovetail two slides. The first and last slide, recommendations for council. This is specific to the trainings. One of the things that we had requested in your initial charter was to identify money for such training. Have you all looked into ways that the city would not have to expend additional resources, whether they're grant opportunities? I'm not opposed to more training, but if that's going to come out of the city budget, we would need to know that ahead of time. Alternatively, if you could, identify alternative sources, i.e. grants, whatever. That'd be extremely beneficial. So that's point one.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's the first one, then we can slide into the second one.
Oh, good. You mean you're going to break them up, so I can answer? Oh, Pete, you spoil me. It's the lawyer in him. Okay, so to start off the first one, actually, yeah, we have had conversations about that, because, look, in an era of COVID, it is very difficult when you folks are managing a budget to feel like you're being needled to spend more and more money that you may not have. I mean, I haven't looked at the sales tax projections for the City of Pasco. Last time I saw you folks discuss the budget, those were down. I hope to God that's changed, but you know. So yes, that actually has come up. Now, we still have a lot more work to do on that, and that's not something I would oppose. I don't know any commissioner that would oppose, looking at seeing how we can get. I would oppose. I don't know any commissioner that would oppose looking at seeing how we can get any supplemental trainings for free or with a grant. I do know. That there have been a lot of rather interesting bills passed out of our state legislature recently that are going to mandate new trainings and all kinds of things. And I believe some of those bills may come with grants, so. It's not that we don't wanna do it, it's that we are on the same page on that one, Councilman Serrano. We definitely agree with you that we shouldn't spend money if we don't have to. We're a lean, mean, awesome machine in Pasco. So I don't think we're in opposition to it and those conversations do happen and have actually happened at our meetings. Feel free to stop on by, by the way. We'd love to have you.
I popped in. You just didn't know I was there.
Well, good, pop in more often.
No, I do appreciate that because, you know, I love it when I got, when we've got, you know, a commission that's interested in involving people. But then that's the ultimate question is where does the money come from? Uh, and then I appreciate the clarity on the school board. I think there may be a way to dovetail. Uh, you had four items on that slide, improve educational campaigns, introduce a tool, and then basically introduce a scorecard. Um, to avoid the perception of going into schools and kind of mandating the children participate. You may want to consider how you could utilize that school card through the school sys- uh, the scorecard through the school system. That way it's not. Uh, actively engaging in the same way um that, again, the perception is there. I know when I read it, I thought, oh, this is interesting. We're sending a commission that speaks on behalf of the city into the schools to teach the children certain things. And and that was my perception, having read it on paper, so. I'm just offering there may be alternative ways such as using the school card and passing it through the school. And finding a way to to engage the kids through that where it's, you know, you're not gonna have a bunch of parents calling the school district saying, what is this?
Okay, so.
Thoughts?
First of all, when you're the chair of a commission, the buck stops with you, so. I'm gonna go ahead and take a thumping for that one because I didn't think that the way that was communicated conveyed that impression. So I'll take that one and the whole community can yell at me later about it. I apologize. We always try to grow in our job. Second of all, as the school district is a legally distinct and separate entity with authority that you as a city council cannot go within a mile of. And you would face all kinds of criminal charges were you to try. The idea of a city board or commission having in any way or any ability. To enter a public school without the permission of the Pasco School Board and jointly the permission of the City of Pasco Government. Is farfetched and quite strange, to put it mildly. It would require. A level of legalese that I must confess in the five years I've done political work outside of this stuff, I've never seen before. God bless you if you can manage to make that one work. So always open to better communication, but the reality is what the, when we're talking about education campaigns, we're not talking about the schools. We're talking about education campaigns about things like COVID, initiatives of the city, city government. For example, when I first attended a city council meeting, if you had told me that a workshop meeting meant you folks are gonna have a conversation and not vote on things. I would have had no clue what you meant. An education campaign involves educating people about how the government works. How are we going to build trust, Councilman Serrano? If the public has not been given the opportunity to learn who we are, what we do and how we do it. So I can understand why there would be some confusion there. A youth advisory board is something that if we were going to do that. We wanna promote with the permission and guidance of the school district if we're gonna do that, because we want our young people to have input in the process. You were a young man not so long ago, not so long ago at all, might I add. And one would think that when you were a young gun in your teenage years, you might have wanted to say something to the authority figures in your city. You might have wanted your voice to be heard. You might have had a radical new idea, maybe a motorcycle ride or something that you wanted. Now, that doesn't seem farfetched to you, does it? Doesn't seem like an intrusion of government authority, does it?
Not in that way.
Well, shuckleberries, we may have made ourselves some progress, don't you think? Who's next?
Yeah, that's it. I I just, like I said, when I read that last bullet point, create an inclusivity commission. Youth Subcommittee for Middle and High School Students. My mind went elsewhere. And so I think is, I appreciate the explanation because I think it helps the public realize that we're not encroaching on territory that's not ours. And and that quite frankly was a concern of mine.
And and you know what?
Appreciate you laying out the rest.
I can see why. I wish I had understood the way that that was communicated would create that impression. Look, I'm trying to do my job just as you're trying to do yours. This is something I didn't know before. Always happy to take constructive criticism.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. I believe Dave Milley, you had your light on next.
Well, hello, Councilman Miller.
Hey, thank you. Uh, good to see you again.
Good to see you too, boss.
Alright, so Chairperson Robinson, I my question or couple of questions for you is uh. You were talking about the Asian American community and their interaction with the city of Pasco. Can you kinda clarify, I mean, what? Do you have any instances or things that you could bring up that could be done better or?
Look, I can give you the blunt answer or I can give you the nice answer. Which do you want?
I'll take the blunt answer.
We're we're not doing enough for the Asian American community. People came here at the last meeting, as I understand it. I was not there, unfortunately. I was out of town. Telling you folks, though there were people in our community that felt like they weren't being listened to when they said that they had had discriminatory instances. Or that things that they had experienced out in the world or in schools. Um, with the way other children were talking to Asian American kids were not being recorded. They wanted a statement of some kind. That is my understanding. Again, didn't see all of the meetings, so if I'm in error on something. Please correct me, but this is what I've been hearing. No statement came out. That is an example of something where we have a growth opportunity. We need to say something. We've issued proclamations for a lot of different things. There's a way to do it where it doesn't look like you're serving. A specific political agenda, if that is a concern, but the fact is we've been silent. That's not right.
Thank you, and we're gonna probably touch on that a little later.
Okay, and then uh my next kinda question was, when you talk about uh different diversity. Um, you know, talk about the city council and the different training. Uh, have you guys done training yourself or how do you know what to be teaching? Uh, I mean, how does? How does that whole process work? I mean. How do you know what segments that you're supposed to be getting to show us? I mean, what is the the whole? Can you kinda walk me through the workmanship of or the the whole process? How you come up with that? What what we should be doing? How? How do you guys get to that point?
Well, okay, so this is an inherent genius of the city council that I don't think you folks have realized that you've already started. You chose every member of your inclusion commission from me to the to four, actually not three, we have four new members. And when you chose them, you asked them a set of questions, you reviewed, you've reviewed their applications. And the mayor signed off on them. What you did when you did that was you put together a team of people that actually have. Either in their professional lives, their volunteer lives, or their personal lives, been subject to trainings. I myself am a member of the Washington State. LGBTQ Commission. In addition to multiple public records trainings, I have also had to undergo trainings about how to. Uh, address transgender and non-binary communities that do not feel included in government. When you put someone like Naima Chamber Smith, who works in the field of diversity. Um, and inclusion and equity, and I don't wanna go any further because I don't wanna create or risk creating any kind of issue for the city here. You put in place someone who is well versed and well trained in that themselves. You also gave us Lynn. And I can't remember her last name. I'm having a brain. Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. I have brain farts. It's terrible. Um, but you put in place someone who actually facilitates this on a on a daily basis in their professional lives and who's been working really hard to help us. This isn't a matter of some gray area. This is a matter of you put a team together that works together to identify these things. That knows where to do the research, that knows which buttons to push. We give you a set of recommendations and proposals and you. Councilman Milne decide if that's a direction you wanna go. That's pretty, I mean, did I answer that question?
Yeah, I I was just kinda curious. I mean, you didn't know if maybe there was a different outlet that you guys were actually. Getting your research information from or if it was just. The group of you guys, your own personal experience to come up with what you would recommend that the city council be trained with or what direction. I diversity, I mean, depending on who you talk to, you could always, hopefully you get what I'm trying to to point out.
I get what you mean and I think this is another misconception that I'm gonna nip in the butt right now. And it goes back to what I said at the very beginning of this presentation. There's a difference between you did this wrong and this is a growth opportunity and we've got to remember that when we have conversations like this. Me suggesting that there's a training, for example, about LGBTQ issues that you may not be aware of. That the city may not be getting trained and doesn't mean Dave Zabel's bad at his job or that you're bad at yours. It means we saw something. That didn't quite match, that didn't cover something that's gonna come up in the city, whether we like it or not, and we have got to get a hold on that. Now, we have our own unique experiences, but we also go to city staff and we ask the city staff. What they're seeing, what they're doing, so that before we state an opinion, before I have to go to Dave, for example, and say, hey, Dave. You done this wrong, bud. You might wanna rethink that. I at least know what I'm talking about, you know? And at least have the city's perspective on it, because there is nothing more dangerous in the work that we do than speaking from a position of ignorance, either willful. Or naturally occurring. This is a delicate thing we do here.
Okay, well, I appreciate that uh clarification a lot. Thank you. And then I guess my last question was. When you talked about uh business leaders and uh of course getting training. Were you talking more of like a an online presence where the ci- the, you know, say a business owner would be come aware of it, but then he'd go to like a. On the city of, say, Pasco's portal and then it'd be like an online class because to get people just that are running a business to then take off in the middle of the day. Go to a training, to go to any kinda training would be very difficult because you're just, you know, overwhelmed trying to keep your business afloat. So I was curious, is there, is that the direction you were thinking or was it actually like an in-person when COVID is done or? Or what were you thinking online? You'd watch it later or were you actually thinking of more of? You'd have to be there in person.
I'm thinking that the first and foremost thing before I answer that is to remember a question that Councilman Serrano just asked, which is where's the money gonna come from? If we're gonna suggest to you that you need a new training, again, it comes back to that core concept, work smarter, not harder. Spending more money is working harder. So the first and foremost thing that I would suggest to council is first, let's identify the problem. What trainings would business owners want? What trainings can we offer? Because there may be trainings legally we cannot offer. I mean, there are some things that you you as city council members know that I don't. And I work for you. There's a reason for that. We have laws we have to follow. So first, let's figure out what trainings we can actually share. Then, once we figure out what trainings we can actually share, then let's talk to the council members that own businesses, for example. The business leaders in our chamber of commerce, business leaders in general, maybe hold a town hall. So we can get people comfortable with telling us if they wanted to, first, do they want the training? Second, which way would they like to access them? Once we have a general idea of what we can offer and who wants to see it and when they would like it offered. Then we can answer the mechanical question of is it gonna be in person? Is it gonna be online? Is it gonna be on city portal? I mean, if we just follow an organizational step-by-step process and we take things one day at a time. A lot of the work that we do isn't gonna seem so scary. It's not gonna seem so drastic and it's not really gonna seem so threatening. What it's gonna seem like is that we give a crap. And I don't know about you, but in everything I do, that's the impression I hope to leave.
Okay, I appreciate that well thought out answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much, Chairperson uh Robinson. I really appreciate your presentation. Um, I'll keep it quick because I know we're uh we're uh taking a little longer than some some items. Uh, but this is important. I'm glad we're taking the time. So I'd like to focus a little bit on the strategic equity plan.
Yes.
When I'm looking at that, and we we I think we have less of a conversation about that than the other items. And I just wanted to make sure I understood. So the path forward here is is if council agrees, this is a good path forward. Would be that we'd start developing a strategic equity plan in conjunction with the IDEC. Is that is that the sort of process that this is recommending or what what? What process is it? What? How how do we do this? Uh, what's the recommendation out of uh the commission?
I just love the city council questions. I can see why you all got elected. Um, so let's start with the form, the main foundation of your question. I serve you. You do not serve me. I give you recommendations, you make the decisions. What I can tell you is the way that IDEC looks at this is what is your plan that you have now? I know that in the past, the city has put something about wanting to have an equity plan in its city goal. So the first and foremost thing we do is look at what you've already done. We then, as a commission, would examine this document or anything that you've done so far. And make recommendations as to how we think you should change it or what we think you should add to it to make it more effective. Again, you are the boss. I am the employee. I am the servant. I can't tell you to do anything. What I can do is recommend courses of action that you may or may not choose to implement in an already existing plan. Or you may, as a council, tell me that you want me, my commission, I should say, to come up with a a. Bare bones document or some kind of document. You may decide you want us to do that. The power actually rests in your hands. We're good with either one. So I would ask you, what do you want?
Well, I guess um Chairperson Robinson, I guess I'm asking what the recommendation is here. I have two bullets in front of me, so I was asking for a little more explanation. So I appreciate that um that that I think what I heard from you there was that the IDEC is plenty willing to. To get this process moving and provide a more detailed set of recommendations to the city, and so the city council can make an informed decision down the line. And that's then that's the next steps. Is that is that um encapsulation of what your recommendation is?
Yes. Yes, it is. I think we're on the same page. Might have taken a wrong turn to get there. Sorry, Councilmember Maloney.
Uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say hi, Jeffrey, and thanks for the presentation. I enjoyed it and like the ideas that you've. Put forward on behalf of your um fellow IDEC commissioners. Uh, you know, later on in the miscellaneous, we're gonna have a discussion about what you brought up during your presentation about. Um, statement of support for Asian Americans in this community. Uh, but you know, on the slide that had that you liked the hand, the tree with the hand. Um, I was curious because it says provides forum outside of the city. And just looking for you to kinda flesh that out a little bit more, what is what is the IDEC thinking about? Having forums outside of city hall.
Well, oh, go ahead.
No, I was done asking. Yeah, it's all you.
Okay, cool. I thought I'd interrupted you and that would have been incredibly misogynistic and I would have been very sorry to do so. Um. Focusing on your question though, look, folks, you wouldn't go to somebody's workplace and then ask them a million questions about their personal life, would you? Would they really feel comfortable if I went to each of your jobs, said, hey? How's that health condition that you told me about in private? Would you be real good with that? Coming to city hall for some people can actually be quite intimidating and obviously you can't lift city hall up and carry it into the. To council district next door. So what we mean by that is finding a venue. That would be willing to host such an event while, you know, when COVID is over and having it there. I mean, for the Diwali Festival. We had it in this lovely church that I could swear used to be a theater in downtown Pasco. In fact, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that it did. It's structured like a theater. Um, and we held uh an event there because that was a key location that meant a lot to the specific city council district that we were in and to the city as a whole. If we were to do one in West Pasco, um, I know that in the past, the city has had listening sessions at the track. You know, it's it's about getting out of our safety zone. It's about getting where the people are. It's about going somewhere that matters to the city of Pasco. You wouldn't hold a listening session in the middle of some random field that nobody's ever been to, would you? You'd wanna hold one to a place of significant, in a place of significance that was easy to find, that would make people feel comfortable to be honest with you. One thing I have greatly enjoyed from watching this city council is. The brutal honesty with which you folks address policy, and that is a difficult thing. But if we're ever gonna encourage people that don't feel safe or don't feel comfortable, we have to put their comfort. First and foremost in our minds and create the kind of atmosphere where they feel okay to tell us. What they really think. And a government building is not always the easiest place to get that kind of feedback.
I would agree with that statement and just say that. You know, there's many people that I know who ask me questions about city chambers and process and. Things that come up in the newspaper about decisions that we're making. And regardless of their resident status, how much education they have, many of which have, you know, quite a bit. Um, to the layperson in Pasco, it's a little bit mystifying, so I really um agreed with your statement earlier. That getting out and just even explaining, um, you know, just the basic functions of local government and how to access it. Is really important. Um, and that, you know, this is something that I think takes the edge off for folks is. There's a formality and a process here in chambers that doesn't exist, that is removed and stripped away when you go to the track or you're in. Downtown Pasco or in different locations where it's a casual setting and you feel like. Oh, hey, I could approach the mayor and ask him a question. So I I really support the idea of, you know, taking it outside of this forum.
I appreciate the statement. I think that sometimes we all forget that we walk in rarefied air when we work in city government or when we're elected officials. We forget the privilege. And I know that word can sometimes be tricky to use, but we forget the privileges that we enjoy that everyday citizens may not feel connected to. And first and foremost, everything we do is about them. You know that and anyone that works for you ought to know that or why are we here?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. I I can't see the other council members. I. I just wanna make sure that you you get the opportunity to to uh ask a question. I just wanna make sure that you get the opportunity to, to uh ask a question.
Blanche, do you wanna go, or uh?
I can go.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Mr. Robinson, uh, great to hear you, um. Uh, definitely uh excited to see uh some progress in this uh, in this committee. Certainly, we've been through a lot, um, and, and I'm sure you've been through a, a lot as a committee. Uh, so I really appreciate to uh start to see some visuals and to see, start to see some uh, uh conceptual thinking about, uh, where do you wanna go? This is not something that's just easy to formulate, um, especially when you're um looking at this in the committee. Uh, as there are many different ideas, so just that, that you've gotten to uh, uh, agree on three objectives, that's a, that's a great co- uh, uh, I, I really commend the, the, the committee to uh have gotten there, and so I very much appreciate that. Um, I think uh, um, uh, other than that, I think uh, uh, one, one thing that I, I'd love to continue to see is this, is a kind of a, uh, I do see kind of the nesting of the uh objectives into the um, eh, eh, um, I guess, kind of more sub-subset objectives, and so I'm really looking forward to uh those being fleshed out a little bit more and become more tangible, but I, I'd say great, uh, um, great job getting to where you're at, um, uh, and, and I can, I can tell that this will be a work in progress for some time. Um, so I guess my, my question, if there's any kind of um, if my question is, uh, what kind of feedback do you need from uh city council, uh, to know that, you know, the direction is correct? Is, is, is this sufficient? Is it, is it uh us attending these uh, uh, uh more, more meetings of the IDEC? Uh, what, what, what would be ideal to, uh, for this commission to really feel like the uh city council i- it has their back?
Well, I gotta be honest with you, I appreciate the question. When I hear remarks from city council members comparing my commission to other commissions, um, or that can be easily interpreted that way and being less than respectful, doesn't really make me feel very supported by the council, and I don't really know of anyone that's volunteering that would. In fact, I take it very personally because I'm a volunteer, as is everyone else, that puts their personal safety on the line to be on these commissions. And I would first and foremost encourage the council, before you decide to criticize or critique any of your commissions, to really think about the fact that before the words leave your mouth, you are speaking to a group and about a group of unpaid volunteers that care deeply about this community, that put their lives, their safety and their reputations on the line, to serve. Let me tell you something, we don't get anything out of this. This is a labor of love. So if you wanna show us that you support us, but when you're making comments at these meetings, when you're actually addressing the fact that you don't think a plan got to you quickly enough, remember who you're talking about. Remember the people and the sacrifices that are involved for those of us that wanna help you to carry out your vision and carry out this community, because I'll tell you something. Very few things are as demoralizing, dehumanizing and painful as when I hear remarks from a city council member that make it seem like I don't care, or that the good group of people that show up to these meetings do not care about this community. We have a lot more to lose than you do. So that's the first thing you can do. The second thing you can do is actually talk to us and communicate. Don't send random emails out or suggest that we're going to do things without at least letting us know. When I don't know something as the chair, that my council may or may not ask me to do, that's not supporting us. That makes you look like you're opportunists with a motive that's not appropriate. So you ought to think about communication with your various boards and commissions to make absolutely sure that they understand, before you've even suggested something sometimes, what you want us to do. Because it's us that's gonna take that hit. It's us that's gonna be thrown into that contentious debate. It's us that's gonna hit, get hit first. So think about that. And finally, you can talk to us, you don't have to agree with some of the things we do. You can be honest with us, you can come to the meetings and voice your opinion. You did create us, after all, we are yours. We do serve the city government, don't we? So if some of you wanted to maybe boost your attendance at my meetings, that'd be great. At least then you'd get some idea so that when a misconception about what it is we do occurs, you don't roll with it. At least then you'd know how to correct a misconception if you see it. I have yet to see some of you attend some of our meetings. It'd be nice to see you, really have missed you.
Excuse me, are you holding meetings in person?
No, we're holding meetings over Zoom, which makes it even easier to attend, gosh, or whatever the city uses, and gosh darn it, I sure would love to see some of you. And I'm sorry, but I'm the blunt type. I have to believe when you made me chair, you knew what you were getting, so if I'm being too blunt, let me know, but folks, if you want feedback, you're gonna get it.
Well, Mi- Mr. Robinson, I'm, I'm uh, just wanna clarify, is that directed towards me or towards council? I, I, towards me, so just wanna make sure I'm.
That was directed towards the entire council as a hopeful learning opportunity, and those who most needed to hear it will no doubt understand who they are.
Thank you, I just uh, I, I, eh, eh, for whatever reason, I felt like that was specifically directed to me, so I just wanted to ask for my own sake.
No, that was answering your question.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is, this is Deputy Mayor, uh, Blanche, can I get a second here to put in real quick?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite understand, who's that? Councilwoman?
Eh, this is Blanche, can, can you hear me? I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, that's perfect. You can uh, wherever, wherever distance you are from the mic, that's perfect.
Thank you. Uh, Jeffrey, uh, first of all, I just wanna say thank you so much for the presentation, uh. I think this was a presentation that was a long time coming, uh, I'm glad there's uh updates. Uh, I'm glad there's now a work plan and a feasible work plan at, at that. Um, and you're right, I do wanna say that this is, this is a work of uh labor. Uh, I appreciate the passion all the commissioners have given to this commission. I was speaking to Ms. uh Tabon, Delia Tabon, who had to step down from the commission. Um, you know, it's, it's draining work, I understand that. And again, just wanna say that I appreciate the hard work and the passion everyone has dedicated to educating our community, to educating us as council members. Um, and uh whatever support you need from, from me personally, um, I, I want to see this commission succeed. Um, I, I truly believe we can make a difference within our community. And as far as educating, uh, uh, you know, just sharing the culture. We are a diver- diverse community, we are uh a community that is very young and learning and, and, um, I, I'm sure we are a community that is willing to learn, uh, and be more accepted. Um, um, so again, just, just wanna say thank you, uh, for all the work you and the fellow uh commissioners have, are doing within this uh IDEC commission. Um, thank you so much.
That means a lot, and I do want to make absolutely sure this goes into the public record. I'm pretty darn proud of this city. I'm proud of all seven of you. I think you've really come along in your roles. We might have our moments, but you're amazing folks, don't think you're not.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tembradas, and uh, I guess I will just, do you have one more thing to say?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, uh, usually I take, you know, if people wanna interact with me or whatever, I do take things very seriously. Do you know, had you sent out a Zoom meeting thing to the council, cause I haven't seen anything come up on my agenda as far as, if you're having a meeting and people want me to attend, they send me a, an invite. Do you know, have you sent out any invites? I, I would have attended had I known that.
That is the jurisdiction of city staff, not the volunteer chair of your advisory board. And if you would like to be included in those things, because all communications that our commission have should be conducted through city staff. Does city staff know you would be interested in attending?
I guess I, I thought you guys wanted to do your own thing, I, I wasn't aware that you.
That's a public records issue, though. If I sent you an email, that quickly becomes a public records issue. We do things through the city staff partly because the public la- records laws are actually quite strict, and we need to make sure that we do not create a situation in which the city is in a, on the hole for something. So I don't mean to sound negative or anything, I think it's a great question. It's one I would not have been able to answer six months ago. It's just, if you haven't received anything from me personally, I do apologize if it seems like I'm not being respectful. It's more me wanting to make absolutely sure that I don't do or say anything that messes with the public records, that denies the public's right to know, or puts you as a council member in an unethical position by inappropriate communication.
Okay, so when are your meetings?
We usually do them once a month and uh, third Wednesday at six P M. Thank God she's here, had another brain fart, cause that was a good question.
Okay, well, um, I know I have two meetings on Thursday, the third Thursday of every month, but uh, I would at least like to attend one of your meetings and, and see what it's like, so uh.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, but I just wanna make a note, and I'm gonna go ahead and uh, I, I know uh, manager Dave Zabel has something we need to be careful with, go ahead.
Oh, no, not that so much. I, I think uh, uh, the Chairman Robinson's point, it's, it's more of a protocol issue than it is a public records issue. So typically, the commissions will uh work with their staff liaison. And I, I, and I would say just secondarily, council has several boards and commissions. If council wants, email invites to all the board and commission meetings, uh, so that they can tend, that, that's something we could include. Council in for, for each of the several we have, or if council has an interest uh, on, on a particular board or commission, just let us know and we can, we can make sure that uh, you, you get an invite, or the link to that uh, to that virtual meeting.
But don't, don't we have to be careful with the quorum situation?
I think we'd have to be careful, well, with the number of council members that attended, yes, yeah.
So we need to be careful with that. Uh, so, uh, and I'm just saying. Yeah, so we, so I just wanted to make it look.
Just a quick question, Dave, who is the city liaison for the commission?
Uh, senior management analyst Angela Pichon is, but I, I attend most of the meetings too, so you get an email either one of us, if you're interested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tembradas. So anyway, I just wanted to make a point that, um, there, there is a reason why, uh, not only do we have uh assigned committees that we go to, but just to, just to keep it in mind, um, and, and I know our council is well aware of the fact that we have to be careful with having a quorum when we attend meetings, so just, just a note. But with that, I, I would like to end uh this, this uh action item or this item on the agenda just by saying thank you very much, Commissioner uh Jeffrey Robinson. Um, you know, that's why we're here, this is all about communication. Uh, Jeffrey may say things and get very passionate about saying some things, uh, but this is the reason why we come and get a presentation. Uh, most, I, I, I'm, I'm very confident that all these things that he discussed tonight and where IDEC is going, will come to the council for approval or, and for more discussion before it goes out uh into the public. And um, and I'd just like to say one thing, you know, I, I really appreciate probably one of the best uh presentations as far as slides go, because just the, the, the one slide where equality and equity, just that, just that picture alone says so much, just so many that many quite don't understand. And it's very hard to get a city of seventy thousand people approximately on the same page. But those are the kind of things that we need to take to heart, and once we know these things and learn these things, just a simple picture such as that one, um, I, I, I think that it's gonna, it's gonna bring a lot of, of, of healing and a lot of wonderful things to our city that's gonna help us grow even more. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, I believe it was Councilmember Serrano, maybe it was somebody else that uh was really active in, in starting this commission. And boy, did you uh, did you start the fire, and, and that's what we wanted, it's a wonderful thing. But I just wanna uh encourage everyone that as we're as passionate as we are, and what we believe in and what we want the city to be like, let's uh, let's celebrate our, our um, what we have in common and respect our differences and, and communicate. And communicate these kind of pictures where equality is different than equity, and we are here to make everybody's voice heard. And that's, and, and, you know, and that's really interesting, because when I first got on the council, in my mind, thirteen years ago, it wasn't about this. It was about city roads, you know, lights, sewers, uh, how are we gonna bring more business in? It really wasn't about this, but this is where, what, what's evolved, and this council is committed to make sure that this community brings the equity and the equality and for every one of us in this city, and appreciate what you're doing. I thank everyone on your uh commission and on your staff. Um, and, and, and as you know, we're here to support, we're here to review what you have to offer, and, and just know that we're going to, headed in a good direction. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Uh, but you're very welcome. Thank you for giving me space to do this. Folks, you're doing a fine job. Don't be so hard on yourselves. Have a good one.
Thank you, Jeffrey. All right. Wow, that was a, that was wonderful and long. So um, next, we're gonna go right into customer service presentation tonight. Uh, I believe Director Richa Sigil, are you on the line tonight? Or, I'm sorry, or are you sending? Director.
Yes, I am. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
Uh, evening, Mayor and council members. It is my pleasure to introduce or reintroduce for some of you Stephanie Brock, our customer service manager. She manages our utility billing, pet licensing, and uh our treasury management function and um for the whole city. And she's been with the city for more than a decade, and in fact, came back to work for the city again. Uh, and I would say that her commitment to excellent and fair customer service is something to be admired and encouraged. Uh, her department touches every household at the city uh each month and every month. And the attention to detail and the commitment to excellence that it requires uh to ensure that our residents are getting the best service uh that uh they should expect of us uh is essentially um all on Stephanie's shoulders. And um her and her team, they are ambassadors, uh, and our residents uh usually come in contact with them the most than probably any other staff at the city. And uh finally, uh, without trying to embarrass Stephanie, I would like to share uh a story uh that shows the way that Stephanie leads her team. Uh, we have unfortunately a pretty large group of uh aging population that needs additional help that they might not be getting from uh, from other organizations or their family members. And there has been, um, Stephanie has a list on her desk, uh, and her staff keep adding to that list of these uh residents that will require extra help. Uh, so they go on uh a list, and if there's anything wrong with their service, uh, we make sure that we're looking at it, we're contacting um whoever uh we can, uh, whether it be within their family members, uh, or the person themselves. And sometimes, uh, we ask our fire and our police department to help us. Uh, and then make sure that uh we are, uh, that they have the services that they require. So this is the kind of uh service that Stephanie encourages her team to do and one that she does herself. Uh, definitely above and beyond uh the job requirements. And with that, uh, she will be uh giving you an overview of the department itself and how we reach out to our residents on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Richa.
Is my PowerPoint on there? Thank you. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share you the information regarding the Customer Service Division of Finance. My name is Stephanie Brock, I'm the Customer Service Manager, and I would like to, let's start here, okay. The Customer Service Division has five permanent staff members and temporary staff is needed to run the office. And we take pride in uh providing high-quality customer service. Our customer service staff are friendly, helpful, and attend to the customers as promptly as possible, and the staff are skilled at providing answers and consistently provide the same level of service to everyone. And they also utilize a variety of different software programs on a daily basis, which can be um a little bit difficult for them in training, but we get them, we get them up to speed. In customer service, um, we consider ourselves the concierge for the city. The team came up with the name of H two O's, which stands for here to offer service. Our job includes providing assistance to the public on a large variety of information and routing inquiries we can't answer to the appropriate departments. We are generally the face of the city, and as we greet and deal with all public inquiries, not just our queries for our own division, we try to do that as best we can. In this presentation, I am going to give you a general overview of the different areas that we handle in customer service. And that will be utility billing, the treasury functions, and the pet licensing. Business licensing was previously handled by customer service, but after the conversion to the State Business License Program in early nineteen, and once we'd established all the procedures and um we moved that function over to community and economic development under permitting in early twenty twenty to better serve the customer. So that was moved out of our area. Okay, let's start with utility billing. So the services we offer related to utilities are online and phone payments through paymentis on a twenty-four seven basis. There are no fees to customers for that service. We have automatic payment plans to withdraw payments automatically on a monthly basis. We offer a low-income senior discount, which is based on the. We offer a low income senior discount, which is based on the U S HUD section eight standards. And another service we offer is our budget plan, and this is a flat rate plan based on the average usage of the previous six months. We also have a twenty-four seven reconnect service to restore service outside the regular office hours. And there is a seventy-five dollar after hour fee for that service. A good portion of our work in customer service relates to utility billing. And prior to COVID nineteen restrictions, we did penalties and collection fees in addition to weekly shut offs on delinquent accounts. On a daily basis, we do on and offs related to new tenants and people purchasing new homes. On an average, we do over twenty-five on offs a day or over five hundred a month. Each time additional properties are annexed into the city limits, we also add or update our billing database. In regards to utilities, we have twenty-two thousand five hundred twenty-eight customers. And this is the general breakdown showing the number of customers that have our different types of service. And miscellaneous basically are your hotels, motels, assisted living, government, uh Port of Pasco, those types of things. Okay, over thirty-three percent of our customers are on auto pay. The number of customers using this service increased well over a thousand since March of twenty twenty. Annually, we send out a one-page flyer with the billing statements to make our low-income seniors more aware of the discounts that are available to them. And in February of each month, um in fe- in the month of February, we processed over fifty-three hundred mail-in payments. And seven hundred and sixty-six payments that were received through our drop boxes. Some of what we do is not really obvious to a lot of people, so um these things would be. Processing over six hundred and twenty-five pieces of return mail a month, doing insufficient fund checks. Collection efforts on unpaid balances, which is currently suspended due to the governor's moratorium. We handle bankruptcies and we process escrow payoffs for home sales. Last on the list, but definitely not least is the phones. Um we handle a a large, large number of calls. We receive over eight hundred calls a week and the calls are on a a a whole variety of items. We send out reminder calls for delinquent balances on utilities and the building, since the building's not open to the public. We can reach well over a thousand calls in some weeks. Unfortunately, because we have such a high volume of calls, um it's not really possible for everybody to get. For us to answer those calls personally. And we generally, um they will have to leave voicemail and we generally get back to everyone within the same day if we receive a call before four o'clock. And um the current city is currently looking at other options to handle the call volumes, so we're looking at different ways to deal with that issue. So you can get an idea of the growth in the city, um here is a. You can see the utility customers here, the new service counts from two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty. And uh twenty seventeen was the boom year, the hen, but it's going back up again and um it continues to rise. And depending on um whether it's residential, commercial, multifamily, they could have multi- multiple meters. And each one of those is considered a new service. In twenty twenty, we had five hundred and eighty-four new services added on. So this is to give you a quick overview of our shut off process, which in this would be pre-COVID. So um you can see up here that we had some different fees and different processes that we followed. But due to the governor's moratorium, we no longer charge those delinquent fees or shut off water at this time. We are still sending out reminder calls um to our past due customers in addition to sending informational letters. To help them understand that the balances will eventually have to be paid. Uh shut off counts are those who haven't paid their balances for forty-eight days, so that was what we would cut consider a shut off account. Prior to COVID nineteen, the staff had worked really hard to get those numbered uh numbers down. And we were doing an average of a hundred and eighty off eighty shut offs a month, which is based on how many customers we have is pretty low. Um that was less than one-tenth of a percent of our customer base. Since the start of COVID, uh the average is now approximately approximately seven hundred and eighty a month that would have been shut off. And this is about three and a half percent of our customers. Delinquent accounts are the ones that are over thirty days past due. So prior to COVID, less than a half percent of our customers were considered past due. At the end of December, it was fourteen percent of the customers were past due. At the beginning of February, we've gone down to eleven percent, and at the end of March, we were at eight percent. So it looks like we're starting to see some improvement there and things are starting to move in a a better direction. And we have been making a huge effort to keep in contact with our customers. Um and let them know what they what's gonna be done and what's gonna happen in the future. And the most re- recent mailings we did were in January and in mid-March. There was some relief from the past due balances when we received some federal funds uh with the CARES Utility Assistance Grant. In twenty twenty, late twenty twenty, and we were able to give out money to a hundred and fifty-two customers. To put apply it towards your utility bills to help those that needed it. The staff worked hard to get the work out, the word out to the eligible customers with two separate deliveries of informational letters to the doors. Of over fifteen hundred homes. We did Facebook posts and lots and lots of phone calls. And I remember at the time that the um Richa, the director talked about this with the council, telling you that we had this money available. There were questions on how are you gonna get this information all out? Well, we managed to do it and out of that, we got these hundred and fifty-two um people to be able to get this kind of funding. And we are hoping that the governor, along with what he's got in place now, will put in some more um rental and utility assistance programs. To help our our customers. For now, we're continuing to reach out to our customers to help them understand that we will not be able to write off balances. And eventually, they will need to pay what is past due. Um we continue to send the reminder calls, we send the letters, um and when the moratorium is lifted on penalties and fees. And shut offs, we will um putting our standard operation back into process immediately isn't gonna work for our customers. So the plan at this point is to communicate with them regarding their options and repayment options. And letting them establish some payment plans if needed, and then we will phase back into our established procedures. So when shut off resumes, it will be for delinquent accounts that have not made payment arrangements or failed to maintain their payment arrangements. The next area we cover is in customer service is the treasury functions. So we handle, in addition to the utility pa- payments, we also have, take care of all the payments that are listed here on this slide. You can see there's quite a few different types of entries that staff need to make, and there are normally between five hundred to seven hundred and fifty. Of these types of payments processed in a month. In addition to processing all the city funds we receive, the treasury functions include bank relations, bank activity entry and management. Balancing of all incoming and outgoing funds to the bank, cash management and handling of the petty cash. The last item we're responsible for in customer service is the pet licensing. In twenty eighteen, the city partnered with Pet Data, a private community company that provides an online phone. And mail-in platform for licensing. They recently updated their databases to add in the breed-specific dogs that were previously licensed at the animal shelter. So those have gone back in to um our system to be licensed. With the closure of City Hall, Pet Data has been handling all the dog licensing since the end of March twenty twenty. And this is actually the way it was intended to be when we partnered with them. Prior to the closing of City Hall, customer service was still processing about forty percent of the dog licenses in person at our windows. Um we didn't wanna turn people away and that came into our office, but it is much more cost-effective for the city. To go through the pet data, and we hope with um that that will continue to get better as we go along. This slide gives you the information on um Pet Data, the overview for the last three years on pet licensing. You can see there was a large reduction of licensing for twenty twenty, um I would assume that that had to do with COVID nineteen and the closure of City Hall. So we are looking at ways that we can communicate to our customers. Um how to license through Pet Data rather than in person, unless they're paying in cash, then they would still need to go through the city. Our goals for twenty twenty-one, um our goals this year are to provide more self-service options to the customers. We're currently looking at an outside twenty-four seven payment kiosk in cooperation with P U D and Basin Disposal. That would take cash. These kiosks would be located at um the Happo Center. And each of the different locations, ours and P U D and Basin Disposal. In addition, we're looking at other online options that may assist our customers so that that they don't have to always come to City Hall. Which they've actually learned not to do since we haven't been opened. And um we're always looking with the working with the staff to provide training on better handling of questions and issues that we. That we get and we're that we strive to provide good customer service. Um we also hope to speed up our response time in getting back to customers, although I do think we do fairly well on that. Um and that would be everything that we have. And I wanted to uh thank you for allowing me to share this information, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Anybody would like to, Councilwoman Roach?
I just had a comment, I wanna say I I as a utility um user in the city. I can echo what you're saying is that I've gotten phone calls back within less than twenty-four hours when I leave a message. Um and last year, when we had a water main uh break on a Sunday. We had somebody out there within a couple hours from the city to take a look at it and um help us figure out what to do. So uh as a council member, knowing that we have identified customer service as one of our goals. And areas of improvement, I just wanna say thank you for addressing it um and working on it, and I think you guys are doing a great job. And in um those capacities.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Roach, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation. Um I wanna echo a little bit of um what Ms. Roach said there and actually expand on that a little bit. Um we were talking about with our goal setting, um we've we've seen that as being such a an an improvement over the last few years or last many years, I guess. But um especially with the last few years, we've transitioned to these um more modern tools as to how to get the job done faster, more effectively. Um we we put, we did indeed put in in our council goals to um, uh let's see, I'll read it directly. Instilling and promoting an organizational culture of cu- customer service across all business lines. And I think that really was with with the example that that your department has set in terms of how to interact with people. We saw that as a as 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 we see that as a potential best practice across the entire city as to how we can engage people with the um, you know, community. And users of the city services first, so just wanted to really applaud you and and your team and all the hard work that goes into that, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tembrofus.
Uh on top of, thank you, on top of what Councilman Maloney um and Councilwoman Roach have mentioned. About customer service excellence features, I do wanna just say uh I'm very grateful to uh the Pet Data. Uh it's made my registering my pets so much easier, not having to take a day to go into City Hall to do the process. It's just so much easier. Thank you for everything, your hard work and excellent customer service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it, they said it all, I appreciate what you guys do, you guys are, you know, it's. I just can't even express how critical it is and for it to be our council goals. Uh you gotta know that, you know, how important, just like every other um organization, but appreciate what you do. And how you guys uh work hard to make it better, and I just couldn't couldn't be prouder and I just wanna encourage you to keep going and keep doing a great job.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. All right, thank you for that. Next, uh on the item is the J J Kelly Construction Annexation Update. Director Rick White, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, Mister Mayor, I am, thank you, and unless I get an indication you can't hear me, I'll continue ahead. Um simply uh put, Mister Mayor, this is an issue uh that we're simply trying to advise council. On what's coming before you next week. Uh it's been a while since this council has heard, actually, maybe even. This council has never heard, a petition for annexation, which is a process that is a bit unique in state law. It involves about fifteen acres on the corner of Wernet and Road fifty-two. And if council recalls, it initiated uh back in September of twenty twenty. When uh council accepted the intent to petition to annex. And that started a process, much of which has been complete now. Uh that required uh us to eventually, which is next Monday, bring this item to uh uh council. So council will be asked next Monday to consider two issues, one of which is whether to affect the annexation. And the other of which is to uh designate zoning in accord with the Pasco hearing examiner recommendation. The annexation is a legislative process, so there will be a public hearing associated with the annexation. The zoning determination is a quasi-judicial process, so it will be coming to council next Monday. Uh through the closed record hearing protocol. Um so again, um just wanted to brief council on what's coming before you in just a week. And obviously, uh would uh be happy to answer as many questions as I can. Noting that we would probably be best to steer clear of questions relating to the. Closed record hearing about the zoning.
Thank you, Director White, Director White, and I will share with council that I've been through this process before. And thank the previous councils for taking the brunt of of getting this going and um. I I'm I'm praying for uh a lot smoother process than what's been done in the past. But uh yes, looking forward to uh bringing this on, and is there any questions from the council? With uh consideration of what Rick White asked, uh Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh Director White, I just had one question, which was regarding to um, you know, the location of these annexations. Obviously, this kind of lead, uh this kind of starts creating, you know, a little bit of a donut hole within the county, within the donut hole. Is is there a process for, you know, by which in general, not specific to this, but and in which um additional sites can be added on to an annexation petition? Or is this um needs to stay within the bounds of what has been petitioned?
Yes, thank you, Mister Maloney, and actually uh you I neglected to mention uh some of the um. Some of the things that go into considering the boundaries, uh this this particular annexation is a little bit unique. Um state law for annexations is is a bit stuck in the mid nineteen seventies. The Growth Management Act, of course, originated in nineteen ninety, has been uh progressively revised every year. Or almost every year, every legislative session since then. Um however, we're still um stuck with processing annexations. Through the outside utility extension agreement or voluntary acceptance of annexation. So the boundaries you see now are the best we can do with uh existing state law. Um they've been rounded off as best we can. In this particular area of Pasco, there are some longtime homes. That have not changed ownerships. Uh we do not have uh commitments for annexation. For uh new owners as we typically would in some of the faster growing parts of uh the Riverview area. So what we have now is pretty much as good as we're going to do, at least at this point. I should also add that uh there's a significant effort on the part of the development uh community. To um work with city uh staff in uh serving this area with uh a sanitary sewer. So uh we've uh done a considerable amount of work with a proposal to initiate a lift station. Uh a little bit south of the actual annexation area that will serve perhaps. Uh, a little bit south of the actual annexation area that will serve perhaps. Three times as many units that are uh, uh, to be considered with this particular developer's desire. And um, I think what we're seeing now is probably, again, given state law, the best we're going to be able to do. At this particular point.
Thank you very much for the additional context, Mr. White.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Alright, then if there's no other questions, and we'll look forward to seeing it on next week's uh, agenda. And thank you for the presentation, Mr. White. Next, we'll move on to the micro mobility scooter rental, Director Zach Ratkay, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, um, the item brought before you this evening is just uh. Sharing some of the regional efforts that are going on with uh, micro mobility and scooter rentals. So this evening, just uh, fairly quickly, um, and then we'll open up for discussion, but uh, we've been receiving some regional commercial interest. This was both approached through Visit Tri-Cities as well as um, each city, Pasco, Kennewick, Richland individually have been approached. Um, it's the scooter share that you see in larger cities like Lime Scooters, uh, Bird Mobility, I believe, is one of the other companies. Um, the interest has been expressed by those companies to the cities, um, and each city is gauging interest of its decision makers at this point. Uh, some of the considerations that have been discussed at the staff level and uh, and, and through our, our regional collaboration is, you know, is there the market for this? In the tri-cities, um, where would you place these, would you limit it to a certain area? Um, obviously, there's laws on road usage and trail usage, uh, that would have to be that, and then is there the desirability of the community for this in the area? So scooter share program is allowed through uh, the R C Ws, it allows for regulation of motorized foot scooters. Um, it also allows for sh- uh, ride share or scooter share um, programs that you've seen, uh, been pretty popular in larger cities. Jurisdictions can charge fees and taxes of each company that wants to come into the area. Um, you can require sidewalk passage, adopt and assess penalties for moving um, and parking violations. Um, this would be for scooters for hire, uh, each city could, uh, has a little bit of leeway in assessing the type of insurance. That would be needed um, for that, as well as how general liability is placed on for um, riders. As well as uh, the responsibility for the city. And then um, usually these companies have a unique identification for each uh, scooter that's shared with, so if you pull it up on your app. You take possession of it for a time being and then you leave it in the middle of a sidewalk in violation, there's a way to track. Um, who that person was that rented it at that time. Um, sort of like if you rent a car and then you have something happen to that rental car, then the rental car company can track, track you down for uh, uh, liability and responsibility. Accountability. Other cities that we've seen, there are several other cities in Washington State that have the program, we have them up on the screen, Spokane, Tacoma, Everett, Redmond. Bothell, Seattle, then Yakima began a ninety day pilot program in their downtown to test it out last February. Um, in addition, I just got uh, you know, news sent to me this evening that Pendleton, Oregon is uh, starting a program as well in their area. Um, essentially, a pilot program would allow a jurisdiction, a community to try out a scooter share program. With the ability to have that out, to pull the regulation or the allowances at that point. Um, Spokane has them, it started out as a pilot program two years ago, and then one year into that effort, it uh, was allowed to become permanent through that city. Um, Lime Scooter is the contractor with Spokane, uh, obviously, storage is a concern. Uh, you go to Seattle, they both have scooters for hire as well as bicycles for hire. Um, bike's a little bit more difficult because they have to be anchored to a specific area to recharge. Um, depending on the type of scooter, there can be scooter corrals or just various areas through a community where they can be recharged. Um, Spokane has thirteen of these areas for scooter charging. Um, but Lime Scooters, that has the Spokane contract, that's where this picture is out of. Also has two staff members that go around the city to collect the uh, scooters to bring them back for charging as well, so there's. Certain component to keep the clutter off the streets. Um, and then, as I said earlier, Yakima's uh, entered into a pilot program with Lime last February. Uh, they've been quoted as seeing as an economic development tool and a potential amenity for their downtown and their parks. Um, what the industry is seeing is that scooters initially allow for a fun novelty, fun usage uh, for people in the community. Um, but they've also seen that it could uh, be a reliable supplement to transportation, um, and quick inner city transportation as well. And uh, yeah, just mentioned Pendleton. So um, we have two scooter businesses that discussed opening a regional pilot program here in the tri-cities. Uh, as I said before, each city has been approached, um, I'll also visit tri-cities as well, we've discussed this at our River Shore Enhancement Council meetings. Um, and uh, Richland City Council took this discussion up last February as well. Some of the questions uh, that have been coming about is, does the tri-cities have a market for this usage? Um, can they be used on the regional trail system and should they be used on the regional trail system? Uh, what about roads and sidewalks and other auxiliary trails that uh, go into the communities? Um, obviously downside issues, you can see on the photo, is uh, placement, uh, there's often a lot of complaints about. You see the woman in the wheelchair, um, some ADA violations and then block, uh, scooters blocking the sidewalks. Um, you see them, you know, messy displays of where they're congregating. Um, there are strategies to get around this, uh, one are, you know, ample locations for charging corrals, so patrons can take them back in a convenient spot. Also having employees of the scooter sector companies coming up to gather them or issuing parking violations. These are either through law enforcement or code enforcement. Um, some cities have gone as far as what we can see up in Everett here on pointing out where in their downtown you could park a scooter. To maintain a five foot minimum for ADA access. Um, you can do a bike rack or they call it the furniture zone at the sidewalk or the frontage zone, um, you've got the parks bike here area as well, so. There are some scoo- uh, some cities within Washington State that are uh, looking at this from a regulatory basis as well. Um, as an urban design basis too. Excuse me, so tonight, really, we wanted to bring forth this uh, presentation, I know uh, two years ago, we had an extensive presentation. On the industry itself, as well as some of the laws uh, that came about, um, there are some, some legal and, and ordinance. Uh, steps that the city of Pasco could take in order to further allow this, um, happy to. Uh, present that, uh, should council want me to at the next workshop. Um. In a good faith effort to our regional partners, wanted to bring this information to the Pasco City Council for discussion and any questions you may have. Um, should the, the Pasco City Council wish to uh, have a, you know, enter into a pilot program. Or entertain uh, scooter companies, what we're probably looking at is a regional approach would be best. Um, we have the trail systems that interconnect over the bridges. Um, so we would look at how we could discern legal usage of these uh, motorized scooters within the city of Pasco. Uh, discuss a pilot program with our partner cities in the, in the region. Um, feasibility for cooperative regulations and cooperative uh, um, uh, rules. And then uh, we would issue an R F P contract with the company for a pilot program, limited term. And then obviously evaluate at the end of that term and determines what's next. Um, I will say that at the uh, February twenty-third meeting of the Richland City Council, they, they were amenable to a limited term. Uh, pilot program, um, should the other s- cities in the region uh, wish to enter that in, but they did. Pro- they, they did prefer a regional approach to this as well, so. That's what I have so far, I'll do my best to answer as many questions as I can or uh, track them down for you, um, and uh, I'll open it up to discussion, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Director Ratkay, Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, Director Ratkay, for that presentation, when I saw it on our agenda packet, I was kinda giddy with excitement because I've had a lot of fun on these in. Uh, Spokane and as well as in San Diego, and I tested out both the Lime and the Bird in San Diego. And so while we're not a San Diego type of city, um, I still had. Um, some concerns about, about usage and, and, and it does align with what you've already presented here and that's. Um, our people, there in California, you're not allowed to ride on the sidewalk, um. But I, I myself was not riding with a helmet on and riding along with traffic. And, you know, city buses and things like that, and as a, you know, novelty user. Um, don't have the same sense of uh, awareness um, in that sort of a setting, and so. The other thing that I, I realized was that the way that those um, scooters are programmed. Is that if you take them out of their, their GPS jurisdiction, they literally. Come to a hard stop and will throw you, and the same thing with um, the battery, as soon as they lose a battery. I mean, you might get a beep, um, and then you stop and they, they stop and you get thrown, so. Those are a couple of helmet where you ride, um, and then one thing that I, you know, only realized. Afterwards was watching people um, in downtown San Diego, uh, take them for a spin after they'd been drinking at the bars. And so kinda just wondering too, that's a motorized vehicle, what we would do from a policy perspective on, on that. Um, so not the fun parts of the discussion, but I still think that they can be um, you know, really wonderful for recreation.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Sharno.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Councilwoman Roach, uh, while I've not been on these, I see them replete with concern. Um, I too, like Richland City Council would really only be amenable to this if we took a regional approach. I don't know that there's value, I, I, I would be extremely concerned. If we just had an intra-city, someone riding from West Pasco over the overpass down, you know, Road one hundred or sixty-eight. Or any of those down into downtown, I mean, there is, we've talked about the fact that there's no bike lane. There's no pedestrian lane on some of those roads, and that's a forty to forty-five mile an hour zone, you know, and, and whether you're going with traffic or not. I hope no one's going forty-five mile an hours on these, um, I, I think they're usually capped at like twenty-five or, or thirty max, I mean, and even that. I don't know, I look at Santa for, for example, you know, where the roots of the trees have. I mean, I've tripped running myself or at least attempting to run, um, you know, my kids. I've seen them crash on their little scooters, right, you know, I don't want to incur more liability. Than we already have to do this, I recognize there's a, probably a small segment of the population that could rely on this. As regular transportation or at least supplemental, so I wouldn't wanna, you know, lose that opportunity. I mean, especially like maybe some of the younger folks at C B C or something like that. Um, but again, there's really, in my opinion, true value if we can do this regionally, but then that. You know, I think of all the joggers and bikers with the, the earphones in on, on the trail system, right? You know, um, it's bad enough when you see someone literally run into one another or a biker hit a jogger. But on this motorized scooter, obviously, there's more force, more speed, et cetera, so. I guess I'm open to a regional sharing agreement. I'd like to see some of the legal issues, but quite frankly, I'd like to see. The vendors provide us with some of the data, I don't really wanna spend the money from a city perspective doing a plan. You know, we've got enough plans in the works, we've got more important things like a, a downtown corridor plan. Supporting our business infrastructure as it sits, well, let's get those ordinances in place and let those who wanna come provide the service. Pay for those additional, uh, again, plans and thoughts, I, I, that said, we're obviously gonna have to vet them. Um, so, opportunity, yes, if so, regional, yes, uh, but obviously a lot of concern. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharno, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll echo my fellow council members, I'm interested, I think this would be good, only in a regional environment, um, and then just. With, with some of these issues worked out, and possibly they can be worked out, speed limits and requirements and such, positive is a way of doing this, but let's make sure we do it right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Just one more thought to wrap up, I, I go down to the bike path on the river to walk and take my kids over there to parks and stuff. And so I already see motorized scooters and electric bikes up and down, especially during covid, I, I think there's been a surge in those types of sales. And recreation, and so I, I'm not even aware if we have um, a current, uh, um, what's it called? Not a resolution ordinance, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you, Councilmember Sharno, uh, about those in, in, those types of. Uh, recreation on trails and, and uh, bike paths, so if you know that, let me know what's going on there.
But it, it is posted, no motorized vehicles.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that's ordinance based or if that's something regional that was done, we'd have to.
Yeah, we can.
I, I can't answer that question tonight.
No problem, thanks for letting me know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Well.
Uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you, I think there's a little bit of lag, which makes this uh, a little awkward, so, uh, looking forward to being back there. Um, uh, I guess uh, my, my uh, main concern, I think it's uh, in line of what uh. Uh, Mr. Maloney alluded to as well was uh, uh, I'm curious if the design of the actual devices have um. Uh, any speed limits or uh, any kind of way to um, perhaps there's a better. Um, option of these, of, of, of these providers that per- perhaps uh, make their um. Operation a lot safer, but I'd be interested to see if there's any kind of study uh, about what the safe limits for these motorized scooters are. As fun as it can be, I, I, I know, I personally don't know people who've injured themselves on them. Um, and then secondly, uh, I don't know, uh, I know that we will be doing some uh, street condition assessments. Um, I think currently as it stands, I'd be very wary in certain parts of uh, especially downtown and East Pasco. About the feasibility of some of these with some of the road conditions not necessarily being safe as these uh, wheels are a lot smaller. And could uh, be a, a great uh, liability um, for, for folks uh, just injuring themselves because of the terrain. Um, and uh, tho- those are my concerns, I, I think uh, ultimately, I also don't, I see this most of recreation, I don't. Particularly see this as a uh, transportation option, especially uh, for folks in lower income uh, brackets. Uh, especially because they're, these are not very affordable, uh, um, things are more for you, you're out and about and they, they do, they, they are kinda, kinda spending to ride.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. And, and I would just uh, finish by saying, you know, I have mixed feelings on this because. You know, we talked about a regional approach and I'm, I'm, I'm good with anything, I just. I, I was wondering though if, if there was a way and I'm very interested in Yakima's pilot program. But what if, what if they were to set up one of these like at C B C that only goes. My mile as a crow flies over to East Pasco and that's, and that's the only place you can go. And then have it set up over on Road sixty-eight somewhere where it's a mile each way from there, because we started talking about going on the bike trails. I mean, now, now you're talking, I mean, that, that's, that's a whole different story, and I don't know if the regional approach will work in that manner, but if we could just. You know, again, just watch Yakima's pilot program, because if we could just set something up to go like from C B C. And just towards east, uh, east, the east side of Pasco, and then, and then uh, one at Road sixty-eight and go just a certain distance. That might work in just in those areas, so I think that would be real good, that would reduce our traffic, reduce our accidents. Uh, and it could have a lot of uh, uh, pros, uh, more than, more than cons, but again, we'd, we'd have to see how that would work, um. And you know, when you start talking about going over to Kennewick and over the bridge, that, that, that changes, that's a, that's a game changer there for me, but. If we could just start it, you know, somewhere close and, and limited to see if it's even feasible, uh, I would be minimal to that, so um. I hope that provides you enough information where the council, uh, how they feel about it and uh, and uh, where we can go with this, but yes, I also agree with. Councilmember Sharno on, uh, it's not really a priority at this point, cause we're really not there yet, like the bigger cities, but we are going that way. And if we can start with something uh, in, in a small or a lot, lot more compacted. Uh, situation, that, it would work a lot better, so that, that would be my thought.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Director Ratkay.
Mayor, if I could have the floor just for a moment?
Yes, sir, who, who?
Um, I, this is Attorney Craig Briggs, and I just wanted to address um. Um, Councilwoman Roach's uh, concern, uh, and specifically, our, our code would need to be modified. Um, cause currently, uh, we do prohibit uh, motorized vehicle use along any park trail and that is under nine. Uh, one hundred, one fifty, so nine point one zero zero, point one five zero, if the councilwoman would like to refer to that provision. Um, and I did note actually that we do specifically prohibit uh, motorized foot scooter use, so we would need to make some changes there, um. If we were gonna uh, take on a pilot program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next item, and now, before we move on to the next item, is uh, the council, okay, do you guys wanna take a, a little recess? Okay, I'm, I'm having one hand, yes, so it is eight forty-nine, why don't we come back at uh, nine o'clock? Uh, to reconvene the meeting, that, so we'll reconvene until nine o'clock, thank you.
Uh wet and dry inflatables, so the bounce houses, obviously food vendors at Memorial Park, uh we have a soccer tournament. Giza Stadium is a cornerstone of the event with uh entertainment. Um we've had a a band play there at times, uh you know, a little little mini concert. We've also had freestyle motocross as well, last couple of years, which has been pretty popular. Food vendors out there, and to cap off the event, the Tri-City's Best Fireworks Display. Obviously, last year, uh of our activities were significantly reduced, so uh we had a virtual parade. Um we had a non-structured family freedom bike ride. Uh parks and trails cleanup, which was done before July fourth, but really a a call to the community to get out, do some walking, help pick up some trash. Uh the virtual community uh twenty-mile uh virtual challenge of running bike, and then uh we had Pasco Goes Camp In. So it was a camp-in in your backyard that you could promote on social media, um things like that. So we did have a lot of good, uh I mean, with with what we had during July of twenty twenty, we had a pretty good turnout for these events. Uh this year, we're optimistic and excited to introduce um some possible and proposed Phase Three programs and events for twenty twenty-one. So this would so far include a modified pancake breakfast, uh with food distribution and seating arrangements following the guidelines for eating establishments. Um a modified street dance or dance, uh we'd have a load, larger total event area, and do our best with social distancing strategies. Um a modified car show, so according to the guidelines, we would have to court off the area, have a separate entrance and exit. Um a maximum of four hundred people in the area at one time. Uh the cardboard regatta would be modified as well, uh we'd have the social distance spectators um into pods, and obviously limit the number of boats in each competition, to ensure that there's a social distancing put into place. Um modified soccer tournament, uh we are having sports, uh sports activities and sports competitions are allowed currently. Uh so we would work with Tri-City Youth Soccer Association and have them present a plan that would follow uh the sport competition guidelines in place. Um Giza Stadium, we'd be back over at Giza Stadium to have some modified event. We'd most likely see ticketed, limited entry according to the guidelines, so if you've seen a sporting event recently nationally, people are in pods, social distance, usually you can get a group of your family together. Um food vendors would be available, obviously food distribution and seating arrangements, much like the pancake breakfast would follow the guidelines set forth in the healthy eating establishment guidelines. Um fireworks, we still are under contract for fireworks, and we have a fireworks contract for July fourth at Giza Stadium. Um same company, same type of show, uh we would, our intention now is to hold fireworks. Um it would probably, uh we would have to work a little bit with the spectator area uh there. So mark uh socially-distanced spectator viewing areas, no more than fifteen in each area. These can be painted on the ground, roped off, um maybe require pre-registration to reserve a viewing spot or ticketed entry. Uh because the fireworks go high up in the air, uh we would also propose to work with our partners um over in Franklin County for maybe there could be some potential spectator spots over at the Happo Center. Um at the softball complex, uh we don't necessarily wanna use the soccer complex, because that's where we shoot the fireworks from, so wanna keep them spaced back a little bit. Um and then obviously, open areas and and people at their homes and everything could see it as well. Uh we are proposing a Camp Patriot Run. And um much like we did with the Lampton Cable Bridge Run in December, there'd be staggered start waves, uh capacity limits, and we would follow state racing guidelines. Um the Camp Patriot Organization would plan and organize. Uh what we do see as staff is the difficulty of isolating and controlling venue areas, um greater degree. We're gonna have to be looking for additional uh staff work, staff power, and coordination with volunteers to help manage these events in order for the, in order to meet the guidelines in place. So our parade, our parade is always one of our more popular events, um Fourth of July, and something that staff has been working on diligently to figure out how we can do this on a limited basis. So we would look at no more than four, four hundred participants in the staging area at any one time. Um staggered arrival and check-in times to maintain separations. Uh spectators must be in groups, so no more than fifteen people per group, each socially distanced from one another. So whether that would be roping off the parade route, um providing providing additional areas in order to ensure that that spacing is met. Um lengthen the parade route to allow for a larger viewing area. We've actually already determined in twenty twenty to lengthen the parade route um just over a half mile to allow for a growing number of spectators. Usually we see around twenty thousand spectators entirely for the parade. Um if necessary, we could look at increasing the parade route even further, to allow for social distancing and eliminate uh traditional gathering spots along the route. Um you know, we would prohibit the distribution of candies, toys, things thrown from the floats, um handouts, swag. Uh just to, just to limit the roadways themselves, and also that's, you know, hand-to-hand uh contact as well. Um another new program or event that staff's kicking around, um an in-person bike challenge event. Um this would be similar to our road races and our running races, where you have uh staggered start waves, capacity limits. Um obviously, we'd be working with the race guidelines available to us through the state. Uh we'd look at the Riverfront Park Trail beginning at Chihuahua Park as well. So really, it's not gonna be the same event that we've seen pre-two thousand twenty, but it seems to be significantly larger than what we were able to do in two thousand twenty as well. Um we are in April, so a number of months ahead of time. Staff's been working for about a month just to start planning this. And obviously, there's gonna be a significant staff effort and volunteer effort to ensure that not only we can host these events for the community, but also we can um ad- ad- adhere to the requirements that are in place at the time. And these are, there's some ambiguity with it too. I mean, we're still working on draft requirements or uh draft restrictions that are coming out from WRPA in their conjunction with working with the state decision-makers. Um i- in July fourth, we could be in Phase Six, we could also revert back to a previous phase as well. So we're keeping an eye on things that come out from W our PA and other organizations that assist with recreation and and sports as well. And uh seeing where we can go from there, so. We want to prevent uh present this tentative plan. If there's any information you want us to flush out, we can definitely do that and return and come back. We'll take any questions, and Brent's here as well.
Thank you, Director Radke. Any questions for council? The Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Radke, for the presentation. So so I I guess for the the parade is what caught my interest the most, just simply from a standpoint of that one. Because it is so packed, and because it is relatively long, the number of volunteers, I imagine, to make sure that there's some sort of compliance given, you know, once we start talking about a city-run event. Um I'm a little concerned about how we do that, so very, very interested in understanding what does that really require? Um if it's gonna require a bunch of, um you know, a worse amount of paid staff time, or or hiring contractors to help with that, I'm I'm concerned exactly how that all logistically looks and what the what the potential financial impact are. I understand that you may not have the answers tonight, and I'm not asking for it, but just in in general, that's what I, one thing I'm interested in there. Um I do wan- wonder if we um could reach out to the past participants of the parade um for the last couple of years to find out whether they'd even want to participate this year. Um for example, float, for example, uh you know, putting on a float or something like that may be difficult, and maybe outside of what someone would even want to enter right now. Um a lot of what, you know, as a past parade participant myself, one of the things is, you know, handing out the candy and handing out the the things to people is one of the big joys of the entire parade. is one of the big joys of the entire parade. If we have to ban that, then that starts to that starts to kind of, I think, defeat a little bit of the jo- joy and draw, draw of the parade itself. So we just want to be very cautious and cognizant of who are we serving with this? And are there going, you know, is it going to be a flop just because we don't, you know, we get, you know, just a whole handful of participants where, whereas in the past, we've had so many. Um, with the longer route, I'm just gonna make the observation of, I I doubt you've ever walked that um parade before or run and sprinted in various portions of it while handing out candy and talking to people, so. Can assure you that a longer parade route um s- sounds um like a, like a chore to someone like myself who's put on my COVID nineteen. Um, and uh, yeah, so those are, those are the, the two biggest things. I'm excited about the idea of having um fireworks. Um, if we can have a portion where it's drive-up, where people can watch it from their cars and such, or the back of their pickup or something in the parking lot. Um, if we're gonna have a relative limited um attendance, um, you know, I concerned about how we're going to manage uh people walking from their houses over to watch it in the soccer fields. Um, you know, again, we, that was a big liability concern for for us last year. I want to make sure that we are able to to manage that well. Um, but excited about the prospect of us being able to get back to some semblance of a normal summer, so really excited. So thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the work that's gone into this.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Shroen.
Yeah, I appreciate those thoughts, Councilman Maloney. Those are, I I think this is gonna take a lot of thinking and obviously you've all put a lot into it. Um, as to the parade, I wonder if there's a way, rather than doing um throwing from the the parade itself, but uh having something like our drive-through that we did for Halloween. Uh, where maybe the participants of the parade would want to donate a bag of candy or whatever their item was, their logoed flashlights, whatever. Maybe they could do that and we could create a gift bag that starts here, but then you end up at the parade at some point, at some juncture. There may be an alternative that whether we do a longer or the same length of the parade somehow essentially, a- and I don't know how you enforce this, but like ticketed, like, oh, you get your spot from nine to ten and then someone else comes at ten thirty. You know, I I I don't know. I'm seeing this and I'm reacting and trying to find a way to allow people to have a normal Fourth of July, recognizing, as you said, we could be in Phase like negative ten and we could be done. You know, highly un- unlikely that we're the latter of the two, but, you know, we may be in Phase Six, right? You know, and it may be that they're so, it's so open that we're just back to normal. Um, I I do love that we still have the fireworks under contract, uh, please keep that, because I think that's certainly something that we can find a way probably easier to to implement, you know, again, it's gonna cost staff time and resources, but that might be cheaper to staff the Pasco PD at the entrances and exits than it will be to have an extra fifteen firepersons on staff, right? I mean, I I don't know what the numbers look like, but I think there's a way that we might be able to collectively come to uh, a way to participate. I am all for um whatever we think we can do safely and um I am happy to volunteer, me and my family and probably our friends. Um, you know, to to do whatever we can. I guarantee you this, as soon as you let the word out, I will do everything I can to recruit if we have a volunteer staff to support this. Because this was, it, this was a low point in my year last year. In fact, I left town because I didn't want to be in town for Fourth of July. Uh, so I intentionally scheduled a trip uh out of town where I could celebrate more openly, in California surprisingly. Um, and and that's, I recognize that's not where everyone is, but that's where I, where I was. And and I, I, if we can avoid that and bring the people of Pasco and the Tri-Cities, that awesome fireworks and something else, potentially the parade, I would love to be a part of the solution to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shroen. Anyone else? Uh, Councilwoman Roach?
I'm just gonna put out there, I'm, I'm hopeful we're gonna be able to celebrate together. I'm living in that space. But in case we don't, I've already pitched my idea to Brent about a red, white, and blue uh luminaria. I see all the Pasco Parks and Rec little, you know, mom and dad kits coming through and for all the different holidays. So we can maybe put together a kit of white bags with little LED red, white, and blue candles if we get to that point and do something neighborhood-based, um. But I think we're gonna be able to, to party this summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. All right, well, Director Ratkay, I say, you know, I'm, I, my opinion is, let's party. Uh, let's do whatever we can safely as the council has indicated and um yes, we need, you know, somehow or another, if we don't provide these opportunities for our city, we're gonna get what we got last year. And that was quite the fireworks show everywhere. So I would like to to be a part, uh, have our city have these uh activities and in a safe manner so that we can eliminate some of the things that happen in many people's homes. And uh, I I say doing it together and doing it safely is is a ticket, so, you know, we have time to think about it, we have a little time to see. Uh, you know, as we get closer, what phase we'll be in and uh we're just gonna, I I say let's move forward with the, these activities and and do them compliantly.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Would you like to remind those who are watching the big, big deal date that's coming up here in a couple of days that makes people eligible? Do you know what I'm talking about, vaccines? We've got April fifteenth date where anybody who is
Oh, okay.
wants one can have one. So I think that's also a way to get us to where we need to be, um, to be able to party, so.
Absolutely.
So hopefully people can go out and get those.
Absolutely. So April fifteenth, the, the, that will open up vaccinations for, for, uh, I believe it's everybody over the age of
Sixteen.
sixteen, yeah. So I I I would encourage everybody, just do our part and uh keep our families safe and our community safe. And that will allow us to to get things back to to normal. So, um, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item. We have uh ordinances, PMC Amendment, Critical Areas Ordinance and Development. Uh, Director Rick White, are you on again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. Thank you and thank you, council, and I'll be brief. I know it's getting late, um. But uh, tonight's uh item is an issue that's related to the cyclical update of our comprehensive plan. It involves uh state legislation that mandates compliance with our critical area regulations and various other sections of our development code. And as our comprehensive plan uh works its way through the county process, uh, we want, uh, we staff wants to take this opportunity to um, um really button up this piece of the compliance efforts so that we have the ability to continue to access uh several sources of funding that are very important to several large public works contracts and uh to be able to provide some finality to the uh adopted comprehensive plan. Um, I I wanna stress right now that these regulations do not involve any changes to our mapping effort with lands designated as critical areas. However, they do involve uh state mandated um revisions to law that have occurred since two thousand and eight. And so, uh, here we are now, uh, several years later, twelve years later or so, to be exact. Uh, with updating our uh ordinances again in line with our cyclical comprehensive plan amendment. Um, so I do want to introduce Jacob Gonzalez, our senior planner, who will be providing the bulk of the presentation tonight and he's done the bulk of the uh city staff work. And our consulting team, Perdus Onesa and Benjamin Floyd, uh, that have done the bulk of the technical effort and the interaction with state uh agencies uh regarding this particular issue. So with that, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, please take it away.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council, and and actually, I'd like to send it, um, we'll start with the Critical Areas Ordinance component. This was uh conducted heavily by our consulting team. And so I'd actually like to just hand it off to them and then we'll speak about the development regulations um following their presentation.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. I'm Perdus Onesa from Onesa and Associates and we have Ben Floyd, Ben.
Hi, Ben Floyd of Whiteless Consulting. Good to be with you tonight.
Yeah, I know, it's a, it's a long uh meeting, so we'll try to be brief um on this item. Um, so we have been working with with the city um for um on the comp plan update for quite a while now. Um, so the Critical Area Ordinance is one of the components that is required for compliance uh with the GMA and the Growth Management Act. And the items that are mentioned here under the Critical Areas Ordinance, those are the key components that the city needs to be in compliance with. And these are wetlands, critical area, critical aquifer recharge area, frequently flooded area, and I'm not gonna go through the entire list. Um, but a couple of things I would like to mention to you is that the, what Rick already mentioned, that this um Critical Areas Updates, you already have the Critical Area Ordinance. And what this updates do uh i- is, is that um we are looking at the clarification component. So this ordinance is more clarified. We um discussed with several state agencies and got their input, good input actually. Um, and made this, this document more in compliance. And uh clarification, that consistency in the code. And the other thing is that um some of the clarification of the terminology and Ben might be, Ben will be able to explain that a little bit later. But Jacob, I don't know, do you wanna talk about the development regulations and then we go to the next, next slide?
Yeah, if we, if we can go to the next slide, please.
All right, I'll just go ahead. Should I go ahead and con- continue on here? So, um, maybe just for reference, the, the updates that we made to the Critical Areas Ordinance are primarily the same changes that we made in the City Shoreline Master Program uh a few years ago when we uh worked on that document as well. Uh, so if you think about protection standards, whether they're for wetlands or fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas um, or for water quality, for, for drinking water, those same protections that are uh in the Shoreline Master Program were incorporated into your Critical Areas Ordinance. So basically updating them so that the standards are really the same uh between the two documents. Um, and then we also made some other modifications and updates. Rick mentioned that the requirements have changed uh quite a bit since two thousand and eight. And so where there were changes in RCW or in RCWs or in the Washington Administrative Code, then we also made updates as well, and you have a tracked changes version of that document that shows you all those changes that were made. Um, many of the changes were made in clarifying and expanding the definitions uh in the document. So lots of different definitions, uh, and uh, and and we received many comments from Department of Health um that helped clarify some of the definitions, highlighted some of the latest changes that have been made in uh in, in the state code or in the WAC for, for those changes. We also received a few comments from Department Ecology, primarily around the wetlands. And uh, and then we received a few comments from Washington Department Fish and Wildlife. Mainly, you know, most of the updates I would classify as minor clarifications. Uh, there were a few standards that were updated. Um, but again, it was to align with state requirements uh and also to meet one of the standards, which is best available science. The document has to be based upon the best available science. And so we updated some source references as well.
Yeah, I would.
Oh, go ahead, Onesa.
Yeah, uh, I would like to add that in terms of comments, we got three agencies who commented. And as Ben mentioned, that some of the comments were definitions and clarifications. And there were some uh, some current practices revision as well, like Department of Ecology suggested some practices that they have at their end, so we updated to be consistent as well. So nothing.
And then we also educated some of the agencies on uh, you know, that we don't have lots of forests in Pasco. We do have some trees along the river, wherever there's water, there are trees. Um, but we don't have to worry to, worry about tall stands and large stands of trees and and other things that and and they talk a lot about streams, but these, the streams are really the Colombian Snake River. And uh, and so we had to do a little education as part of the process, but we, we, we were able to share some feedback and the agencies appreciated the clarifications and where we accepted their comments and where we, we didn't think they were applicable.
Hi, good evening again, and and we'll focus now on the uh development regulation updates. And again, uh, to ensure compliance with the Growth Management Act and the uh requirements of our comprehensive planning efforts. So we'll touch on a few of the updates that uh we are proposing today to align with that. And if we go to the next slide, we can talk about the uh affordable housing update. So uh, we actually did not have a definition of affordable housing in the municipal code. We reference it quite a bit in the many of our documents, council goals, five-year consolidated plan, and recently with the comprehensive plan. So uh, the paragraph you see there is what commerce requires us to comply with. So staff has now uh, uh, proposed a pretty general definition of affordable housing that also aligns with the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development's uh definition of cost-burdened households and also low and moderate incomes. So a, a pretty standard update. I would also add that the affordable housing and how we uh and how we categorize it may be refined and further enhanced in the future as the city continues our affordable housing efforts. And on the next slide, uh, this is brand new to municipal code and this are, uh, these are standards for electric vehicle battery charging stations. So uh jurisdictions planning under the GMA, the Growth Management Act, must allow for electric vehicle battery charging stations in all areas unless zone for residential resource use or critical areas. Uh, this was new to the state in two thousand nine and jurisdictions after two thousand eleven going through their updates are required to comply with it. So again, with this, we've added a purpose, a definitions, and several design criteria components for uh this particular update or addition. And another addition was to the mineral lands regulations. This is more seen on the county side, but we were uh recommended to have this as well. So again, a pretty simple update, we added definition and guidelines for permitting. We also come um uh reached out to the Department of Natural Resources just to make sure that we had checked off everything um as necessary. And on the next slide is uh the biggest update with regards to the development regulations. And this is how we process our uh comprehensive plan amendments. Here at the city of Pasco, our current regulations were fairly uh, were fairly vague and nondescriptive and and they didn't really have much requirements for uh the evaluation or analysis of amendments, land use amendments, text amendments, the comprehensive plan as they come through the city. So per the GMA, we're required to establish an annual amendment process, including an emergency amendment process that includes um creating a docket, so kind of a packet of all of the proposed amendments from applicants. Uh, those go through uh Planning Commission and Council and and several methods. Uh, but the uh idea is that uh the amendments are considered concurrently to avoid kind of piece-by-piece changes. And and really what this does is make sure that not only does the comprehensive plan updated as it should be, but it also makes sure, it, it also ensures that updates to the land use align with the uh other uh long-range planning efforts that are under the comprehensive plan, so the sewer planning, water planning, transportation planning. It ensures that all of these are under that umbrella and align as they should. And on the next slide, um, is a kind of a draft uh framework for what that looks like. So an applicant would come to the city, we'd have a meeting with them, provide them with any information as necessary. We submit all of these um to the Planning Commission for a, a high-level review. Those are forwarded to council, sort of as a formal acceptance. And then they're kicked back to staff for a more thorough analysis and review, alignment, et cetera. Then they uh go back to the Planning Commission and Council process for uh acceptance or denial. Uh, and then uh back to the Growth Management Hearings Board like we do with the comprehensive plan. So again, uh, brand new to the city, this will be a little bit of a learning effort, I think both for staff and and those working here in the city. However, this is pretty standard um across the state. It, it exists across the river and the other jurisdictions of the Tri-Cities. So this is our effort at just uh upfitting our process to ensure that our comprehensive plan remains up to date. Uh, so with that, um, I think myself and our consulting team are are happy to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob, and those that participated. Uh, any questions from council?
I have a question, Mayor. This is Councilmember Roach and Mr. Gonzalez, I'm just I kind of have a disconnect and I'm trying to understand this a little bit better. This is a amendment to our uh comprehensive plan and uh these definitions. Uh, the one in particular about affordable housing um, and the median family income, those percentages are based off of the, the county median, and I, I don't really understand why it would be based on. And I I don't really understand why it would be based on the county and not the city if we're talking about our own uh comp plan.
Yeah, I are you talking about the 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 language within the ordinance itself? Or the the inclusion of it in the code amendment process?
The the part about the thirty percent of income limit for renters, fifty percent for uh family sized owners, eighty percent. Unless if I if I'm reading that correctly, I may be reading that incorrectly. I don't know if that's. What that means.
Yeah, we can certainly check the ordinance just to make sure that it it's it's included as it as it should be. The uh the definition itself is pretty standard. It references the HUD definition of cost burden, which is that thirty percent for renter occupied households. So no more than thirty percent of household income shall be spent on household related costs. And with the owner occupied limits, those are based on low and moderate income households. We don't actually specify in the definition what that exact number is. And it's likely that as we continue and actually begin some of the affordable housing uh plans that we have in uh yet to begin. That we will likely add specific thresholds for that if it's if it's deemed necessary.
I guess.
But and also wanted to clarify that it it not necessarily an amendment to the comprehensive plan. These are code amendments uh to the Pasco Municipal Code.
Okay, I guess the the reason is just throwing it off for me is because we're talking about city matters. And and also just the uh knowing that, you know, if we're including county in uh this definition that we have. That that also, that threshold would be different um if we were to include, you know, some really wealthy farmers. And uh people who are out in the agricultural uh cultural area. So um that's why I was asking.
All right.
If I could chime in briefly on this, this is attorney Jeff Briggs for the record of Kerr Ferguson Law Group. The actual definition of affordable housing in the ordinance does not include the reference to the county. I think that's what uh Mr. Gonzalez was referring to.
Okay.
And sorry, that's on page seventy four of one ten of the of the agenda.
Okay, so does that mean that it will not be in our um update of definitions? And that that's just a parenthetical that's there for us as informational?
Right, so the definition um is in there, uh council member, but it does not reference um the county median in income.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, oh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Uh I just, I had a, we'll we'll consider this a general question because there's a lot of, a lot of meat here. And I understand a lot of this is just aligning with definitions. But from a practical perspective, does this create any change to the city? Any effect to current property owners or developing the Broadmoor area? Um do is there a a significant new impact on demands to city staff? So big picture, um how does this, how does this affect the functioning of the city?
I can take the question about the, you know, effect to existing property owners and requirements. The the requirements are still the same. The city has to protect the critical areas functions and values, so wetland functions and values and habitat functions, et cetera. The updates that we're uh making in the critical areas ordinance. Are to specify the requirements that need to be followed when doing so. It's so it's more of a uh clarification of requirements and tightening up some of the requirements. And uh but the overall responsibility for the city and for the, you know, for a landowner within the city are are still the same. Uh with the updated standards. And I don't know if Jacob or Rick, if someone wants to speak to the staff time on it.
Um, no, uh thanks, Ben. And and Mr. Maloney, I I agree with Mr. Floyd. I I think the the biggest thing is um the biggest uh impact will be on staff with new processes. Relating to administering critical area ordinances. Again, as Mr. Floyd noted, there's there's really no significant change uh to property owners themselves. It's more about how to go through the process of doing whatever it is the application presents to particular lands. And aside from definitions, there isn't a lot that has been changed. With the exception of the comprehensive plan docketing process.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Rishard.
Thank you. I just have a quick question on um it's. Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty five point two fifteen point oh two oh. Uh then subsection four talks about initiation. So if if someone wants to initiate what appears to be a challenge to the comprehensive plan, as long as they're a property owner within the UGA, a citizen agency. Or other association within the UGA or city councilor staff. Is that speaking to the then present UGA or the proposed UGA? So for example, we have property owners who had concern about our map. That were not in the UGA but would then be in the, you know, proposed UGA. Would they have standing under this to challenge our map? And if that's not something that we can answer online tonight, or or just we can, it's late, that's fine. Uh just something to think about, whether that's granting rights to, again, current residents in the present UGA or the proposed UGA. Who has standing under that definition, it's not that clear. Regardless, I appreciate that it clarifies that I, as a citizen, at least residing within the UGA, have the right to petition. So I appreciate that clarity. But again, if we can figure out or or if if it's the proposed boundary or the present, um I think that'd be beneficial. Aside from that, I mean, I can tell a ton of work went into this and I thank you for that. So just some food for thought on that. And again, if we don't have an answer tonight, think about it, kick it around. And if there's more updating, just call attention to that, please, so we don't have to read another hundred and ten pages for when we adopt this. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
My understanding on that is that you would have to be within the existing UGA, not a proposed UGA to propose a comp plan amendment to have standing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so will this be, will this be coming to us as early as next week?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe it will. If if council uh needs anything for clarification, uh please let us know and we'll be glad to do that. And if we can't get it to you in time for next week, we'll uh be certain to get it in time for you for the next regular scheduled council meeting.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for that. A lot of work uh went into this and appreciate all the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a wonderful evening. Uh next, we're gonna be going into the next item. That would be the Resolution Agreement with HDR for Construction Management Services for the wastewater treatment plant improvement phase one project. Mr. Warley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. Thank you very, uh I'm gonna be very brief on this one. Uh tonight, we are presenting to you a construction management services contract with HDR. For the wastewater treatment plan improvement phase one project. And tonight is an opportunity to ask questions about this item. We will be bringing it back to council for approval next Monday. Uh as we have done in the past, uh these contracts are for inspection services. To ensure that the contractor builds the project per the plans and the specs. Uh there's a lot of work that goes into these contracts uh by the consulting firm. They do change orders, pay applications, contract closeout, startup procedures, coordinate special inspections and those other types of services. Council may recall that this type of contract is pretty typical for large projects. We last year did a contract similar to this for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Uh some may be asking, why do we have so many engineering contracts on these large projects? And I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. Typically, what you will see is two uh contracts that go along with the contractor's bid. One contract is one such as this, which helps the city manage the construction contract. The other type of engineering contract is with the design engineer. Because throughout the course of the construction project, sometimes questions have to refer back to the design engineer of record. In order to get questions answered. And I bring that up because on this particular project, next week, we will probably have another uh contract amendment to the Murray Smith and Associates who designed the project. We will have a contract for them as well. So this cost is eligible for the ecology loan funding that we've indicated in the agenda report. And one final note is that based on a heroic effort of our staff, our consultants and our legal staff. Uh the construction project for the wastewater treatment plant phase one project is out to bid again for rebid as of last Friday. Council may recall that we canceled the bids recently and that project is out back on the street with some changes and modifications. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warley. Any questions from council? All right, appreciate the presentation and look forward to have it on the agenda next week.
Thanks.
Next, we'll move on to um ordinance Northwest Sewer LID interim financing. Director Riecher?
Evening, Mayor and Council. What at the agenda in front of you uh is related to our Northwest Sewer LID. Refreshing some memories here, but back in March of two thousand twenty, uh you had approved establishing the Northwest Sewer LID. Which builds a sewer front line in our uh essentially our Broadmoor area. Uh however, uh it was only in December when a bid was accepted. Uh and now the construction uh is on on its way. Uh a large part of the council is very familiar with our Chapel Hill LID. This is slightly different than our Chapel Hill LID. In fact, this is more of a normal route for an LID to go. So essentially what happens during an LID process is that um we have, uh we complete the project. So there's an interim financing, which what we will be discussing today. And once the project is complete and the full cost of the project is finalized, then you uh issue uh an LID bond. Uh for our Chapel Hill LID, because of the nature of that project, we think did things a little bit differently, which is that even before the project was complete. But after some of the bids were received, uh we decided to finalize uh the LID and issue the LID bonds right away. Um so with this project, uh it is about uh three point two million dollars uh that is being requested. And um we have as a city uh two different options. Uh either internally funded via reserves of some other funds. Or we can go externally um like like to a bank um and um and ask for a short term loan. Uh we do have ample uh reserves in our general fund that we do not anticipate uh requiring um in the next year or two. Uh and um also, the the restrictions around how a a local government can um can invest. Um are quite restrictive and sometimes uh, you know, rightfully so. Um so that city staff are not going out there and and uh maybe investing in GameStop, right? And so there there are certain uh uh restrictions to uh where the the city government or local government can invest our our reserves. Um so as you can see from the agenda report itself, uh the returns, because they're so safe, are quite low. Uh and what we're proposing here is that we utilize the three point two, almost three point three million dollars um of interim funding. Um so once the project is completed and we move towards issuing an LID bond. So uh anywhere between one to two years till that project is complete. Uh that we utilize our general fund reserves and general fund provides a loan to our sewer fund uh to complete this project. And uh when the LID uh bonds are issued, then the proceeds of those bonds would pay off the general fund. So it's a very short term loan. However, it's mutually beneficial to general fund and to sewer fund uh and the project itself. And uh the reason for that is essentially the general fund gets a higher than the market rate return. Um because we're proposing three point two five percent in rate of return versus usually one point five in treasury bonds that we usually get. Um whereas for the the sewer fund and and the project itself, uh we are um bypassing uh the closing costs. And probably a higher interest rate from external uh funding agencies. Uh so that is what is in front of council. You will also see uh a note, uh that is essentially a note, um we're not used to seeing that nowadays, but it's essentially a certificate. Um to general fund, if you chose to go this route, that shows that they have holdings um for this project. And an ordinance that will facilitate um that process. And with that, I'm here for any questions.
Wow, thank you, Director Riecher. Any questions from council? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sigdell, for the presentation. Just had a quick question. I see the maturity date is December first of two thousand twenty two. So i- if if for some reason the project and the issuance of the LID bond uh were to be delayed past that date, is that is that easy for us to fix? Or what what happens when that, if that were to be the case?
Yes, great question. It is very easy for us to fix. Uh I would essentially come to you with uh something very similar, but we would just be asking for an extension on the loan terms then itself.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? Counsel. Okay, all right, with that, well, thank you very much. Um I I gotta tell you, um I'm impressed. This is um, this is good financing. This is good, good work and appreciate what you do here, Director Riecher and uh and City Manager Dave Zabel. Uh I think uh I think this is a a productive way to move forward with this project.
Thank you, Mayor.
So any, if there's no further comments or questions, and um we got through the majority of our agenda, we have a miscellaneous council discussion. And I would um, I do have one, but I'm gonna go ahead and let uh Manager Dave Zabel go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I I do have a couple of items. Uh one, I I know it's been a long night, but I think this is a serious issue and it's gonna take a few minutes to talk about. And uh the other, just an update on uh an item I uh shared with you last week and had promised some information back. So a little more than two weeks ago, uh you all, as well as myself, received a very thoughtful and I think heartfelt message from one of our community members. Uh expressing concerns on the issue of hate crimes and negative attitudes towards the Asian Pacific uh Amer- excuse me, Asian American Pacific Islander community. Uh that we've seen nationally. And uh, you know, I'd I'd probably just add it, in the world, we're we're seeing some similar sentiment sentiments towards Asians in general. As Pasco, as a city in what Eastern Washington, we're not necessarily in a position to impact an issue like this nationally. But we can make a difference in our community. And uh I think our first item this evening, the IDEC Commission Report, I think that's a great indicator that uh this council. Has as a top priority cultivating a community where all are accepted and feel safe and and welcomed. IDEX and just IDEX is one of many steps as councils, as policymakers have initiated. And I do want to kind of go over as I as I did with the author of the initial uh email. And I think it's important for the public to kind of hear, uh this council's been very busy along these lines. You've established the Arts and Culture Commission to build a greater understanding among community members, the culture's making up uh Pasco. And that's something that's just kind of getting underway. I mean, they've been meeting, I think, just since last uh August. They're already making some, I think, some very good progress. And uh once COVID restrictions are lifted, I think we're gonna see a lot more in terms of cultural events out of them. But right now, they're working on art and and culture type events. Uh you've developed long range planning, planning policies and land use and and housing that are better aligned with today's Pasco in the future. Your budget direction has resulted in in community safety in the area. in the areas of mental health, community risk reduction, community oriented policing, capital investment, balanced across the community, proactive emergency medical response upgrades, reduce response times and funding of our area resources. All are aimed to promote equality and equal opportunity access in the health, safety and unity of the community. And since receiving the communication, I wanted to share with council, I did through email, but to make the public aware, we've been in contact with about all the council members about the concerns raised during the events we've seen nationally, and particularly about this specific communication. And at the staff level, I, as I shared with you earlier, via email, police departments conducted a five-year review of their records, which revealed no record of incidents rising to the level of a hate crime. That said, we don't know of unreported incidents of noncriminal type aggression or even potentially criminal acts. To try to get a pulse on this issue, the PUD or the PD, through its area resource officers, whose intent is to work within the communities, to get to know the communities that they're assigned in Pasco. That's the whole, that's what the premise, the whole program's designed around. They've made a concerted effort just over the last week or so to make contact with some of our known Asian American Pacific Islander community members, primarily through churches and businesses. And all of those contacts that were made reported no incidents, and that they also reported feeling comfortable in this community. They're, of course, also, I think awareness and knowledge among, on their part of what they are seeing natural, nationally. But no specific concerns from them or their contacts, meaning customers or members of churches or what have you here in Pasco. Chief Roski shared this belief, shared his belief that the outreach was useful in strengthening lines of communication with the AAPI community. And those contacted indicated they will proactively reach out to their community members, their contacts, and report any experienced concerns. I think that's a good first step. It doesn't mean that things are not happening, however. So to use Chairman or Chairperson Robinson's word earlier tonight, opportunity. We use this effort as an opportunity to continue to build inroads into the AAPI community. To one of the points raised by the, by our community member, while the AAPI community in Pasco is small, and perhaps, as our community contact shared, nothing along lines of race-based aggression towards that community has or is happening here. Or, but I would say, no, perhaps it has, and those contacts have yet to be made aware. We don't know that. But even if it were not happening here, I, it's, when it's happening elsewhere to the level we're hearing about it, especially with the numbers in the community that are as small as we have here, I think it's a couple percent. I think at times like that, it may even be more important to reassure community members. Historically, this council, in such times where there may be unease or concern within the community, has initiated a proclamation as part of its own outreach efforts. And my intent tonight, just to raise the issue, following up on the concerns that were raised to all of us, and provide council some, and the public some information and some facts as we know them right now. And to create a bit of a platform to discuss the issue. So with that, that's all I had to report on that. Happy to take input from council and how you may wish to respond.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. And I will, I will keep my comments to the end. Go, go ahead, Councilmember Roach.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've been in contact with City Manager about this. I, I also received that same email from this community member, and I appreciate them bringing it up because for me, as somebody who is Asian American, I, I feel like I straddled the, the line of being a Pasco resident and also feeling that same concern of, of, you know, what is happening in our country and what are these, why the escalation? Asking myself why the escalation in hate-based crime against minorities, but then as well as feeling really dejected about the fact that, you know, violence towards women is so gross, so demeaning, so disgusting. And, and then on top of it, you know, when it's race-based, it's, it's also extremely despicable. And so, you know, some of the conversations that I've had, you know, with this community member, with the city manager about maybe we haven't seen the, the most recent events taking place here in Pasco, but the, you know, the access to information and the technol, the era of technology that we live in, it, it's a, it's a bridge to everywhere. And so that immediate access, knowing that it's happening in Atlanta, Georgia, in California, in New York, it still feels close to home. It still feels like America is our home, and why is this happening? And, you know, I guess it, it is, I think we see the most egregious examples in mainstream media, but we don't really hear often what are the like everyday sorts of incidences that are happening to people, regardless of whether they're Asian, Latino, African American. I think they are happening. And the conversation that I had with Richa, who, Director Sigdel, who is also Asian American, is that, you know, she gave really great feedback to me in that, what, what is the approach? What is the actionable thing that a resident of Pasco could do to report? Like what is, what is reportable? What is the definition of reportable? And I can, I can tell you just, you know, the, the, the one-on-one conversation that I had with City Manager, realizing that a person like myself, who has a lot of privilege, I obviously have access to these city chambers and making policy. I am, you know, socio-economically comfortable in all these ways. I have this privilege. And even in that conversation with Mr. Zabel, realizing that there are probably times in the very recent future, in the very recent past, that I could have reported things and should have reported things that were slander, for example. When I ran for this elected position, a former city councilperson, you know, tried to make xenophobic comments, saying I was not born in the United States of America. And, you know, blasted that all over, to the Tri-City Herald, to Facebook. And so those are, while they're not violent, like those are the exact type of xenophobic sentiments that cause people who are off balance, who are angry, who want to scapegoat, to attack. And, you know, I didn't, I didn't report that anywhere. But those are the types of things that people don't report because they're, they're either aggression or microaggression that you don't know, what am I supposed to do with that? And I'm saying that as somebody who feels like I have a very privileged place in society. And so what do we, what are we expecting from people in Pasco who do not have that same sort of privilege? Who are the laypeople, don't understand that it's okay for them to call a non-emergency number and say, hey, this kind, this person just called me a bunch of expletives that were racial slurs. And I'm shaken up by it. Or I had somebody follow me in their car and, you know, say some racial slurs to me. And so I guess what we can do from a council perspective is give guidance to city staff as to what are the actionable things, maybe police department or awareness that the city can do as far as educating our public as to how they can reach out for help if they need it. And, I mean, I think that's, that's one piece of it. The other is that, you know, I'd really like to work with the IDEC in creating a, a resolution for city council that acknowledges, you know, just the history of different, you know, people of communities of color that have historically built up Pasco. Latino Americans, African Americans, Chinese Americans. And also talk about, you know, not just embracing culture and diversity as, at a time when we're trying to win All-American city awards, but to actually live our values and, and not just say it, but to do it. And so that's why I was also asking the IDEC Commissioner Robinson about where he, where the IDEC plans to go around the city to hold forums. So that's all I have to say about that, and I hope that council members will, you know, take into consideration what I put forward in the near future and, and hopefully IDEC as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Councilmember Roach, for, for those heartfelt and comments. This is, this is an area, of course, from, you know, I'm, I'm in a position of, of a fair amount of privilege in my life. And, and so I know when I started researching this to understand better, what does this look like? Because I just simply hadn't been thinking about this. And so when I started looking at, when I started looking at the statistics that Mr. Zabel shared with us and some of the links and getting myself more educated, I was, I was shocked. I was shocked at the, the numbers and statistics and the, and worse, the trend. So I'm certainly supportive of us, you know, continuing in our, in the same theme we've been, we've been continuing for some time of, of making sure that we recognize the diversity of, of Pasco and celebrating that and making sure that people understand this is the place, this is a safe place to be, and we want this to be a good, safe community. Hopefully, as Mr. Zabel was saying, we haven't had any reported incidences. Hopefully, it will stay that way. Hopefully, that is, that is true, not just on the surface and not just what's reported, but truly, truly the way it is for our city. I certainly hope, and I, I think we all aspire for that to be true. So I'm supportive of whatever effort would, would help recognize that. And if that's, if, if the IDEC is, is the right vehicle for making sure that we have the the proclamations and the way of presenting this to the community that's, that's the best for us, then that's, that's great. I support that. If there's a different way, I support that as well. So I'm supportive of the effort in general. So thank you again for your, for your personal and heartfelt comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Yes, just a quick comment, if I may. Councilwoman Roach, thank you for bringing up the issues and, and the comments you've made. As an individual, not raised and privileged, but currently do hold a position of privilege, also want to, to commend all the individuals that have come forward with their concerns. And I agree, we should have some sort of venue to be able to anonymously report those issues that are coming forward and those attacks. We don't have currently a big population of AAPI. However, there is not to dismiss that there may be any issues. But again, I agree with both the, our council members and the comments City Manager have made. We do need to embrace our diversity. We do need to acknowledge that there are some flaws. And I believe we are more than willing to address those and, and work to, to be a better representatives for our city and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. Anyone else? Well, I would just like to finish by taking responsibility for, for waiting this long to, to mention it. It did come from a community member. And I, I, I guess, and I want to thank Councilwoman Roach and those who have expressed their heartfelt feelings on, on this issue. As an American of Mexican descent, sometimes, and, and maybe somebody of privilege, you become callous to, to a lot of things that are said. But I would like to just mention to all of those Asian American Pacific Islanders that have felt uncomfortable here in the city of Pasco, I would apologize to you for, for not maybe having something in place that would make you comfortable enough to, to, to speak up and mention it to the council. Our, our emails, our city council emails are online and you can find them to express your concerns, like many others have in the past. And, and I'll take that responsibility of, of waiting this long to mention something, but appreciate Mr. Zabel's information that he has provided to us. And it appears that, you know, although we may be comfortable here in Pasco, and I'm really saddened and it sickens me really to hear that, that somebody, perhaps in the schools, the younger, the younger kids would, would say some inappropriate things at school. And I would, I would hope that if the parents learned that maybe their child was doing this, that they would correct it immediately. But I am proud of Pasco because although we have had very little incidents, I, I know it probably has happened. But I want to tell you that I personally, and I hope to speak for the council, but I won't, I'll speak for me personally. I, I will, I will take any measure where somebody hurts somebody because of their race to the extent of the law, to make sure that, that they feel safe and to do what's right. And what's right is to treat everybody the same and to treat everybody with respect. And, and not judge them by something that happened somewhere else. I, I just, I just, if there's something wrong with our society, if, if anybody thinks that's okay. So with that said, I'm, I would be in favor, and, and I would be in favor to support a proclamation if staff could somehow provide some input on a proclamation so that we can review it and, and I'd be in favor of, and if that would help just one person in the city of Pasco, be feel more comfortable with coming and asking for help if, if something, if they feel threatened for any reason, I, I would be more than willing to do that. So I don't know, Mr. Zabel, I don't know if you have any comments on perhaps having staff come up with a proclamation that we can find or, and, and, and work together to get it done? Or how would you see would be most appropriate to move forward?
Well, I, certainly, there's been a lot of good discussion tonight. And I, I know I've been taking notes as well as other staff members, and, and we've been kicking this around a little bit, too. The idea of IDEC was brought up. We can certainly maybe bring a draft to them. That might be a faster way than to try to talk to them fresh at a meeting and try to come up with something in, in one meeting. I don't, I don't think we want to let a whole lot of time sit before council is able to, to make a statement. If, if council wants to do a proclamation, probably the sooner the better. So we can take a run at it, get some input from that commission and then bring it back forward to, to council, I think, in, in pretty short order.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zabel. And, and again, as, as we were having this discussion earlier, you know, we have, there's, there's a lot of availability. And it just hits my mind right now, but what John put together for the city for complaints and things of that nature. But we have a good, a police department that's supportive. Please speak up and let us, let us hear your voice. So thank you for that. Thank you, Dave Zabel. Was there something else on the miscellaneous items that you would like to?
I, I did have one other item, Mayor, that I, I promised council we'd come back tonight, talk a little bit about American Rescue Plan funds that are allocated to the city. And just as a reminder, and, and for the benefit of the public, that amount will be approximately eighteen point four million dollars that we'll receive in two equal installments. The first one on or about May tenth of this year, with the second approximately six months later. And unlike the CARES funds we received last year, these funds are coming to the city directly from the federal government rather than the state of Washington. To date, there's, there, there's little we know about the specific requirements associated with the funds, which makes early planning a bit of a challenge. I, I will share, though, that the, the deadline to, to spend those funds is much greater than what we had with the CARES fund. So that, hopefully, we'll have a little bit more time to be some, somewhat strategic about it. We've been advised by our federal counterparts that detailed regulations related to the use of funds will be forthcoming, like the funding on or about May tenth. So by the time we get the money, we should have those guidelines. I, I think from a strategic standpoint, and council's aware of this, you, you have a, almost a half a billion dollar Bionio budget, and well over a million, a hundred million of that is capital budget. It'd be pretty easy to spend eighteen point four million dollars. While that's a lot of money, it'd be easy to spend it. One, there's a lot of need, but it would be easy to spend it in a way you didn't see much from it. You know, you could bury it in projects and things like that. So I think, I think there's quite a bit of forethought that needs to, to go into it. So I think, I think there's, uh, quite a bit of forethought that needs to, to go into it, uh. And one that probably, I, I would recommend includes a robust public outreach. Uh, so the public has an opportunity to weigh in on this unique opportunity. And, uh, certainly the council would then benefit from, with a higher level of confidence that the money is targeted, uh, to community needs. So we, I, I think that's a piece that, uh, we need to have, uh, probably more discussion. Now, I don't know that we can have that tonight, given the hour and the, and the time. Uh, we are aware of some guardrails associated with the funds, uh, and I was going to ask Director Sigdel if council indulges a few more minutes uh, to share the little we do know. And we can talk about what guardrails we do have. And, uh, equally as important, what we don't know at this point in time. So with that, uh, Director Sigdel, if you don't mind.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Zabel. Uh, it feels a little bit of a deja vu, uh, because I remember talking about this uh, a little bit less than a year ago with CARES funding as well. Uh, and what we are hoping for at this time, uh, is that the, this funding will come with a little bit less strings than, uh, than CARES did. Uh, but overall, uh, we have, uh, four or maybe five pointers with very high-level, uh, information. Uh, number one is essentially COVID assistance to communities, so to people, to businesses. Uh, and, um, one of the things that I am very interested to see is the details within that line item. Uh, because what we found with our last experience is, uh, many times, especially with our small businesses, they're not as sophisticated to qualify for all of the federal, um, strings that are attached. Um, so we're really hoping for, uh, for, um, maybe a different tact this time. Uh, so we're anxiously waiting for that before we, uh, come to council with any kind of program. Uh, because how that program is going to be tailored is going to be very important to make sure that we get to, um, uh, to our businesses and to our residents, uh, in a way that is most impactful and is not asking um, too much of them, uh, essentially. Uh, the second part is, uh, labor that is spent on COVID nineteen emergency, which is a pretty much a straightforward thing. And we're not looking for any more details, um, seems like any other grant program. Uh, and, um, the other part is essentially, um, being able to replace revenue. And what we've seen is, uh, so far that that is going to be measured in your revenue, um, reduction from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh, we do not know for sure how exactly that calculation looks like. And frankly, other than few areas like our TPE funds and, uh, our hotel motel taxes, uh, we've seen very little reduction and of course utility, um, utility revenue. We've seen very little reduction in our overall revenue, uh, for Pasco, which is great news. Uh, and the, the fourth part, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, uh, is that it can be used for in- infrastructure investments. Uh, but it does, uh, at this time, kind of try to narrow it down to water sewer or broadband infrastructure. Um, we're not sure if it is intentional that they're excluding transportation, um, or if it is, um, um, just, um, you know, just because the, the law was passed, um, and, uh, it was an oversight. Um, so we're, we're waiting on all of those guidelines and thankfully, well, I'm hoping in the next two weeks, uh, we will, uh, start seeing more details. Um, but at this point, um, especially I myself am very interested to see what, eh, what can we invest in in terms of infrastructure, but then also what are the requirements, um, that the city has to impose upon our residents and our small businesses uh, when we are providing them with that, uh, with that assistance as well?
So tha- thank you, Richa. Uh, the, uh, it's interesting that, the term infrastructure in this case because we're having this national debate about what infrastructure means. And, uh, in this case, it's very narrowly defined and it doesn't include, for instance, facilities or transportation, as Richa said. So we, we kind of want to get a little bit better clarification on that and, uh, uh, primarily, we don't want to, we don't want to create expectations, uh, we might later find aren't possible to meet. So we, we feel we need to have better, have a better handle on, on those things, uh, keep, so we can keep our communications with the public straightforward and simple and accurate. Uh, we're, and like, as I mentioned, we're a few weeks out from having specific guidance, uh, in hand from the federal government. Uh, our, our recommendation would be, uh, we, we, we reach out to, or excuse me, we, we meet with council probably shortly after that time to kind of walk through what that guidance is and then develop a bit of a strategy or strategies, uh, as well as discuss the outreach efforts. So I want to share that with council. If there's any feedback, I'm happy to, to take that and cons- and consider that and get back to you.
Councilmember Shonel.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I had one thought, which is that, uh, I don't know whether we may be able to partner or not with other local agencies. I don't know if this is only going to cities, but you know, we've got the Ryman project, you know, coming through the port of Pasco. We've got the tribal nation that's bought property up there. Some of the infrastructure broadband in particular that may assist, uh, in developing those parcels of land may be worth consideration. Um, so just stuff that came to my head as we're talking.
I, I would, I would also add along those lines, there, there's also uh, grant money opportunities through the same package. Now, tho- those are competitive, but there's going to be some opportunities for some specific type of items. In, in terms of infrastructure or, or programs, uh, that we'll want to have a better handle on as well to, and share that with the council so we can really put a comprehensive package together and, and, uh, and, and make a, make a good run for the community.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
I think, uh, perhaps related to what, uh, um, Mr. Zabel was, uh, talking about as well, and I, I don't know if it's the same package, but I know that Congress has re- uh, returned to the pro- uh, Project Earmac designation process. And I know that we got a request from Franklin Transit to, uh, see if we can sign a letter of support, uh, for a couple of the projects that they're wanting to build in Pasco with some federal funds. Uh, so I wanted to bring that up. I don't know if it's the same conversation or not, but it seems to me like it is. Uh, so perhaps maybe Mr. Zabel can, uh, direct that appropriately.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Alvarado. That, that's actually not necessarily from the, from the, uh, American Rescue package. That, that is the, the process that, uh, uh, Congress, Congress has re-initiated, which is the earmark process. And, uh, also the next package, uh, potentially, uh, the big infrastructure package that we're, we're hearing a lot about uh, nationally right now. So that, that's, I think, I want to say around the order of two point nine trillion dollars. And, uh, that's exactly the, I, I think, uh, uh, program that, uh, Councilmember Alvarado is referring to. So what I'm talking about with the eighteen point four and the allocation of that's a little bit different, but uh, we, we did receive that, uh, from Benton Franklin Transit just today, just this afternoon. And I haven't had a chance to even get to that yet, but, uh, probably be bringing that to council next week.
All right. Uh, Councilwoman Roach.
If transportation were included, I, I guess I would say that the State Route twelve area, um, would be on my wish list. Um, if it's not, then I would go to, um, asking that we consider, um, providing residents a, um, the utility assistance. Um, I mean, essentially that comes right back to us, but from what I know about basic needs, food, water, shelter, um, people can't live their lives if they don't have their water on. And so I think that's a, a really, really critical need for us to, to help people out during COVID with that.
All right, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that feedback and, and so we'll, we'll kind of go forward with that and, uh, we'll be reaching out to, to council. Uh, and maybe spend some uninterrupted time, maybe two to three hours on a, perhaps an evening or uh, last resort, hopefully, uh, Saturday morning. I, I know you guys, uh, have full-time jobs and, and this is a big imposition. So leave that up to the council as to how you want to do that. Staff will be ready to support whatever, but uh, looking for two to three hours to really have a good discussion about this once we have some facts in hand.
All right, sounds good. And thank you, Mr. Councilmember Alvarado for bringing that up on the transit. Uh, I know we had a little discussion on that and, uh, they've, uh, as they've indicated, we'll look into that as well. So with that,
Oh, go ahead. For that one, I, I know that there is a Friday, uh, uh, April sixteen deadline. Uh, so then just want to make, make sure that that was known.
Okay, thank you. Well, I trust there's no executive session tonight. So it's been a long meeting. Appreciate all the efforts and hard work of the council. Um, thank you for all you do and staff and everybody who, uh, presented tonight. So with that, it is ten twenty and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.